Okay, I think we're getting ready to get going.
Okay.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted in just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on item number one point two B, preliminary plat number one six zero zero eight. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with a clerk within fourteen days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January fourth, two thousand and seventeen. May I have a motion?
So moved, Beckius.
Thank you.
Second, Finnegan.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, he will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on the item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. The item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing. Under section three of today's agenda, all items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Thank you. I just would note that item one point two A and B are being removed from the consent agenda for a separate public hearing today as we've received written comments from an adjacent property owner. So there's two remaining items. Item one, one point one A is annexation number one six zero one four to annex approximately nine point two five acres, more or less, for the development of single-family homes and town homes. Item one point one B is change of zone number zero seven zero six three A from AG Agricultural District to R three PUD Residential District Plan Unit Development for the development of single-family homes and town homes, both located generally at Northwest Forty-Eighth Street and West Holdridge Street. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
No. I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on either of these applications? If so, please stand and state that item.
Doesn't appear to be. I entertain a motion.
Move approval, Beckius.
Second, Harris.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay. Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'll now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received from the applicants prior to this meeting.
Okay, we have received two written requests from the applicants for two-week deferrals of agenda items four point three A and B, which are comprehensive plan conformance number one six zero one two and the associated change of zone number one six zero four five relating to the Telegraph District Phase Two redevelopment project. Please note that although Commissioner Shear is not present, he did declare a conflict of interest on both these applications.
I would entertain a motion for deferral.
So move Finnegan.
Second, Washington.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Is there anyone here wishing to present on this item rather than wait until the date that it's scheduled?
February first?
February first. Doesn't appear to be. We'll now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and she'll have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you'll have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, I'll be calling the change of zone and the related preliminary plat together for public hearing. Item three point one A is change of zone number one six zero four four from R four Residential District to R three Residential District to create single-family lots on property generally located at South Folsom Street and West Amaranth Road or Lane. Staff recommendation is for approval. Item three point one B is preliminary plat number one six zero zero eight for a new R three Residential District preliminary plat with requested waivers to subdivision regulations and design standards on property generally located at South Folsom Street and West Amaranth Lane. This is final action on this preliminary plat unless appealed to the city clerk's office within fourteen days, and staff recommendation is for conditional approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. Rachel?
This is an application for a new preliminary plat. The project location is at South Folsom Street and West Amaranth Lane. So it would be a new single-family residential subdivision. They're showing one hundred and sixty-two lots on their plan, and the applicant requested waivers to the requirement to provide pedestrian easements on several of the blocks, which are over a thousand feet, and those blocks were Block One, Block Three, Block Seven, and Block Eight. And the planning department agreed with all of those waivers except for the waiver on Block Seven where we requested they provide a pedestrian easement. And so through this subdivision, there would be two main east-west pedestrian routes that generally line up to West Cardwell Drive and West Amaranth Lane. And so for the Cardwell Drive kind of east-west connection, they're showing a conceptual sidewalk that would go along the north side of the development to help provide connection at that location for pedestrians going east to the future commercial area. And then the second east-west pathway lines up with Amaranth to go something sort of like this through the neighborhood, and the planning department felt that a connection was very feasible to be provided between the cul-de-sac and the street through Block Seven. It is a large lot, and the connection would allow for that east-west pathway through the neighborhood pretty easily. So this graphic just shows that in more detail. Today, or as the plan has shown, these lots would have to go around the block like this to go east, but the pedestrian connection could go something like this right through the middle of the block. And the pedestrian easement would be required to be fifteen feet wide, and we did kind of a mock-up here to show where it could go, and it shouldn't be difficult to fit in this location without any reduction in the number of lots. And overall, the connection could, would reduce the overall pedestrian path for these lots by upwards of four hundred feet, so we felt that was significant. And just to step back to the bigger picture on this, this land already is annexed and zoned for urban density residential uses, and there's not a particular number of lots that are approved as part of a preliminary plat. It's basically just however much density they can fit in per the zoning area requirements. And with that, I'll see if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Rachel? Guess that's it.
I do have a question, Rachel. On that Block Eight waiver for the sidewalk, why, why did you guys feel it was appropriate? Because I'm assuming that at some point the acreages will develop into something like this as well. Is there a big grade difference that's causing a problem, or?
No, it's not a grade difference. Right, in theory, you know, sometime in the future, the acreages will probably subdivide, but we felt like that's pretty far down the road at this point, and so we were, we were not going to oppose their request for the waiver.
Have a question?
Yeah.
I looked at this agency reports, agency reviews, and I'm curious if building and safety completed their review?
Um, I don't think they did a review of this. In this case, it's not absolutely required because there's no existing conditions. There's no buildings out there today, so it was kind of like a courtesy that they would review for us.
And Public Works had recommended denial, the watershed program. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Um, yeah, so the watershed management folks had said there were some documents missing that they needed, and they had a few changes to the drainage plan, but they gave the go-ahead for this to go forward with, we have a generic condition of approval to just revise the plans to their satisfaction.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rachel? Thank you. Applicant?
Good afternoon. Bob Benish. I'm one of the investors and owners of this, of this development.
Bob, could you give your, give us your address, please?
I sure can. Office address is sixteen thirty-three Normandy Court, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you.
So a little background on our company, we've done, we're in the process of probably three or four developments here in town that we've been working on that have been very successful. Village Meadows, Charleston. This is kind of our new leap of faith because we are stepping across the highway. We are going into a new area that we're a little bit unsure whether or not it's going to be successful or not. The reason, you know, this ground has been sitting here is because it's out there, you know? It's not, it's not right next to another development, so it's a big leap of faith. We think it's prime time. If it's ever going to happen, we need to make the push to southwest Lincoln. Our schools want it, they need it, they need to, you know, move some growth to this side so that they can get their students more, you know, circled around town. Over the next six months, I think you'll see us come forward with some commercial. Our goal here is to create some development residential. We control the land to the north. We have a new proposed elementary school that we're working on just north of this property that'll be part of this community, so we've really spent a lot of time on it. Our big constraints here are not only are we in the middle of nowhere, but we also have huge power lines. And I don't know if you guys have driven out there and you've seen the site, but our front door, we've got to, we've got to go under a big power line and a big power post, and so my goal is how do I get people over that? How do I, how do I sell lots to people and build houses for people knowing that the front door isn't the most attractive? So if you look at the plan, you see how we, we've designed kind of a boulevard coming in, heavily landscaped on both sides. Our goal is to create this beautiful entryway. It's going to cost us some money. Our, just our infrastructure costs on this phase are over thirty-six thousand a lot. Now, that doesn't include land holding costs, marketing costs, realtor fees. We will probably lose a little bit of money on every lot because it's just so expensive, this first phase, okay? But we think that's the only way we're going to get this thing going forward. And like I said, this is a, this is a part of a bigger picture. We have, you know, we're talking a thousand new lots here for town, and as you guys know, we are in a housing crisis in this town, you know? I see it, I know it, because I deal with people every day. You know, Monday, I had seventeen phone calls for new homes. You know, we want to meet with you to build a new home. That's a lot in one day, so. Right now, we're at under six hundred homes on the market for Lincoln, Nebraska. That is, our normal is like twenty-two to twenty-four hundred, so it's something we desperately need. So we're asking, the other thing that I'm trying to sell here is character, okay? So if you notice, I have curved streets, and I preach this, character. You know, I live in a neighborhood with lots of character because of how the houses are designed and the streets that go everywhere direction, and it's easy to get lost, and we love it because there's no straight path. You don't open your front door and look down the street, and it's just a straight street. I, I'm not a big fan of, because that doesn't sell. That's not what people want. It's not what our citizens want. And so people that come in my door, they want character. Cul-de-sac lots add character, and curved streets add character. And so our big, big hang-up so far is this, this sidewalk off the end of the cul-de-sac. We will lose, we could potentially lose four lots. I know they put an exhibit up saying, oh, look, you won't lose any lots, but your lot's going to be fifty, a very small lot. That's going to bring very little money, okay? So I have to decrease, we're going to lose, is it fifteen feet on that street? Which is, it cuts the value. I mean, it's going to cost us more, and we're already not, we're not doing this to make money on the first phase. So we ask for a waiver for that. It's just slightly over. If you look at the cul-de-sac, that is not a long cul-de-sac. That is not a big cul-de-sac. It's a very small, it's almost as small as you can get. It's one lot in and a bulb, and that doesn't meet design standards, you know, because our design standards now really are no cul-de-sacs. I mean, this is just barely over. So I ask that you, you waive that. It's, it's a huge money constraint. I know I'm a little bit over. On the north side, we, she mentioned the sidewalks on the north, there's another power line there. Our goal is to do something very similar we did in Village Meadows where we ran the sidewalk under the power line, created an open area. We're doing the same thing here, and so we think that'll be really attractive for, for some just amenities, so. Really, that's any, I'm going to let Mark talk a little bit about some of the other items.
Yeah, Mark Palmer, Olson Associates, six oh one P Street. Yes, it's condition one point one point seven that we'd like to delete regarding the sidewalk. It is, it does exceed the thousand-foot requirement. We would have been a lot more cognizant and looked for designing the site a little differently if there was a major pedestrian generator somewhere close to this, but the school's probably to the north. The commercial, what commercial there is, you're not really sure where it's going to end up locating there to the east of the property over here, and the effort that we'd like to do is, is put more effort into some of the other areas on the site rather than spending money on a, on a very short cul-de-sac that really benefits about six lots right through here that would walk through there and come this way through versus going around. And so we, we think it, it makes sense in this location not to install a sidewalk. We're very cognizant of, of where sidewalks are needed. If there was a road aligning and there was a, a way that this would be a feeder for pedestrians to, to access through the neighborhood, we'd be looking more into it, but we really think this is, excuse me, this is a situation where a waiver is applicable. I think that's, that was our, our one comment. Also, there was, neighbors had questioned, I think, the, the development of this property. This property has been zoned R three and R four for probably ten years now. The, I think the neighbors, back years ago, I met with the neighbors when the Southwest Village Project was under design and coming through Planning Commission and City Council, so I think the neighbors have been aware that this project is occurring. It's, it's taken a long time, and hopefully this is the first step towards opening up about two hundred acres in southwest Lincoln for residential development. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Guess that's it. Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Could you please come forward?
Carol Wilbet, sixty-eight hundred Southwest Ninth Street. Here with my neighbors from the adjacent community, Sullivan's and Fran. I would be reading the email my husband sent earlier today. We do understand that the land on which this project is planned is part of the city of Lincoln. Like to state that the development will certainly change the character of the surrounding residential acreage properties and may reduce our and other nearby owners' property values. The juxtaposition of existing acreages and this new develops, developments tightly packed lots is alarming to us. To this end, we would make a suggestion, if possible, that the number of lots in Block Eight be reduced to a total of four, and the number of lots in Block Three be reduced to five by combining lots one to three and five to four. This would act as a buffer of sorts and also provide a gradual logical progression of lot-house sizes from the majority of lots in the northern part of this proposed project to the established existing acreages to the south and southwest. We also noted an inaccuracy on the mapping that there is a current acreage home being built on the property adjacent with the Mackenzie.
Michael Sullivan, sixty-eight zero one Southwest Ninth Street. Our property, my wife is with me, our property borders this development just to the west of Southwest Ninth Street. I'll take a couple of comments first of what I've heard just a moment ago, and then I do have a list of questions I'd like to present to you about this project. First off, we're one of the relatively new owners here. We've just bought that property in two thousand and thirteen, so I can't attest to the comment about talking to, being talked to about the impact of this development on their neighbors because we're relatively new, but certainly since two thousand and thirteen, no one ever contacted about, contacted us about the possibility of this happening and what impact that might have on our properties. Now, that's all I can say about that. The question about maintaining character, well, and I'm, it's very impressive, and that's something that should be desirable, but what about the character of the existing lots? These are all three-acre lots that align along Southwest Ninth Galen Circle, and talking just recently, the people in those areas never got this letter about this study or this new development, nor to request, give them an idea that there was a chance to provide some comments. I think just because you were looking at just the properties that boarded it doesn't give the full impact to all the existing homes, and then when I heard, I believe Rachel, who said that future dividing of the current acreage lots, that has some direct concern to us, and I'm sure that any of you who are living in that property would have those same concerns that we have. So one of my specific questions is, has there been an environmental impact study done by the developer to look at what the implications of development of such a large tract of homes, one hundred and sixty-two, would be on the existing properties that border or would be directly affected by construction? The impact of putting so many homes on a fairly relatively small amount of land, and would there be impact on our existing wells, our sewer system? What about the amount of dust, noise during construction? Is there a plan to allow some blocking of those things affecting the folks that are going to be south and west of this development? No one's brought to us anything that said that they were concerned about the existing homes, and I think that that's important. We put our lives into these places. It's where we wanted to be. We wanted that separation from large tract housing. Not against it, but I think it needs to be well-planned out and that the concerns of the involved people in immediate, you know, contact with this development should have these assurances that their property values won't be going down while the developer is making a fairly large amount of money over the future with his homes. I don't know that that's good for Lincoln, and it certainly wouldn't be good for people, especially anybody that owns property there. Also, we'd like to understand is what would be the impact on Southwest Ninth Street? That's a gravel road. Now, I know that's not part of this development, but could that also then just be swept in? I'm also in agreement that I think there should be some consideration of a buffer zone between large tract housing and the established acreages, whether that be a green zone for trees and so forth, or converting the Block Eight homes to larger lots that would make a good transition from dense housing to the existing acreages. We're certainly concerned about the impact of traffic on the area, so I don't know, I'm sure you guys all developed, looked at that. And I would like, final last question on the developer, he said he's had experience with several developments. Has he ever had experience with a development that butted up against established acreages? And what, how did they handle that to ensure that the integrity of our property and our value was maintained? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Probably have questions for staff. Rachel, you want to come back up? Go ahead, Maya.
Rachel, can you address the map discrepancy that was referenced earlier?
Yeah, so, let's see. I think what was being referred to was the conceptual lot layout that extends out on most of the boundaries of the preliminary plat. That's just conceptual, it just shows future extended street layout, future extended potential subdivision. It's not concrete, and it's not being approved as part of this application.
Could you point to where?
Yeah.
Where the discrepancy is?
This was, I mean, I believe this is what we're talking about, this cul-de-sac shown conceptually over, I think it's two lots, I'm not sure. It's a couple of acreage lots, but.
So we're saying what's being shown is not exactly what's happening there?
Right, it's just, it's just conceptual. It's a requirement that developers show how the streets could be extended for two hundred feet on, on all sides of the development.
Is, is that the same as what the conceptual plots are, or plots are to the west? So we're looking right now at Mackenzie. We were to go west, follow the light.
West, north, I mean, because this is kind of out there by itself right now except for the development on the south, so, I mean, it's, it's just a conceptual plan for how the streets would work together, make sure we have connections through the neighborhood as it develops into future phases.
And could you possibly just quickly address the questions that were raised before about notifications and to whom they were sent, as well as if there was an environmental study, and if not, if, why it was not necessary?
Um, well, so, yeah, in terms of the environmental study, watershed management, health department reviewed this and recommended approval and conditional approval. reviewed this and recommended approval and conditional approval. That's probably the most I can say about it.
What about the notification of the acreage?
And then notifications, it would have been our standard notification distance, I think it's 200 feet, from all the boundaries of the application area. So it would have caught all the adjoining property owners, but it's true, it might not have caught some of the further acreages.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. Rachel, could you show me, can you pull the map back up a little bit so I can see the bottom? Is this entry point here that's right by the word Larson, is that 9th Street?
Yes. So 9th Street today is a cul-de-sac.
It kind of ends right at that border.
Yeah, right about, right about here. So they're showing, you know, extension of 9th Street conceptually for maybe a future phase to the west, but that's not part of this...
Right. But it kind of shows us where, where 9th comes into this.
Right. I mean, I, I think when it re, you know, when the western part, if and when it redevelops, we'd want to see that connection made.
Now, the developer talked about a school going in somewhere to the north. Do you know where that's at?
I, I am not familiar with that school site, but...
And can you tell me, there's some spots, like the Outlet D and the Outlet C, there's Outlet B, those are just green space and, and they're needed for water retention.
Right there, for detention primarily. Yeah, these two areas.
Not parks, they're not...
No.
Okay.
They're open space slash detention.
One more question, Rachel. Forgive me if I missed this, when you first made your presentation, but I forget what condition it was you, you wanted to strike, but what's your take on striking the sidewalk?
Sidewalk.
The pedestrian way?
Right. The, I think it was 1.7, can't remember, but yeah, which is, which would allow them to have the waiver to, to not construct the pedestrian easement in Block 7. So, yeah, we would not be supportive of that because we would want to see a pedestrian easement installed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Just, just to clarify, the, the property was zoned and annexed back in 2006, and so we, we did not meet with the neighbors. We've just been coming in. We were planning for just a preliminary plat, but one of the, the items that we found was that half the property, well, about half the property is zoned for R4, higher density residential than what we're planning. So we're actually down zoning the property to, to clean up this parcel instead of being R4 and R3, to be all R3. And with respect for what we're doing, we wanted to make that cleaner and we don't want to be as dense as what was originally approved out here. The, the environmental, I mean, we'll be good neighbors. We're going to grade and, and do the construction as we would with, with any project abutting neighbors in Lincoln or, or anywhere. I mean, we have to, we have rules for runoff, for sediment control. We did, just to, to clarify, those lots on the south end, yeah, and, and Rachel was correct, this is very conceptual. This area is very conceptual. We, we're a little more certain on our concept to the north because this is the property that Bob and his partners have control of as well. The school site that he mentioned is...
We can't see where you're pointing.
I'm sorry. This, the school site that he mentioned is, is closer to Old Cheney Road in that section has been the negotiations and discussions with LPS, so it would be in, within this section of land.
So it's north of Old Cheney or south of Old Cheney?
South of Old Cheney. But the, the lots that we're looking at, these are 140 to 150 feet in depth, and then we have an outlot along the south side. We have tried to, we're, we're looking at our stormwater detention. We are cognizant that we are abutting larger lots. Someday in the future, they probably will develop into something a little differently. I don't know how their homeowner's association set and what they're, what they can and they can't do on each individual property. But that, that, we did try and attend to them, but on the, on the flip side, we're, we're working with R3 zoned property that Bob and his partners just acquired last year. So he's, he's the second generation of, of developer almost to, to develop this property. And, I don't know, Bob, if you have anything more?
Oh, just to address the concern with the neighbors, yes, I am very sensitive to acreage. I still farm a lot of ground. I'm still very in touch with acreage. I build a lot of acreages. The downside of buying an acreage this close to town, especially next to R3 zoning, you could potentially have houses next to you and, and, you know, we don't, it's not our intention to, to value his land. If anything, it might actually increase it because it now will become developable down the road. You know, it's got water and sewer to it. This, this could be something for future, when you decide you want to move, you, you might just get really top dollar for it. So it's not our intention to devalue anything. It's just, it's called growing pains. It's called growing Lincoln, and we run into it in southeast Lincoln when we're up against the acreages. And we do our best to be good neighbors. And yes, the wind will come up and blow stuff and we get out there as fast as we can to pick it up and, you know, we do our best. I think the main issue for us is the sidewalk connectivity. And if you look at the map, you know, I've lived on a cul-de-sac for 25 years. All my last three homes were on cul-de-sacs. I, I lived on a cul-de-sac that was, we had 20 homes on. I mean, it was a longer cul-de-sac. We didn't have sidewalks. We wouldn't want a sidewalk going through the end of it. It devalues those lots. When you go to sell a lot and you have a sidewalk next to it, you're going to have to take less for that lot because nobody wants that lot. They don't want people walking past their backyard. It's, it's a big deal. And really, who does it benefit? If you look at the map, you're saying it's going to benefit these six, maybe six lots. So it's a matter of coming down here and going through, or it's a matter of just going up two houses and then across. I just don't see the benefit. I mean, the cost of this could be in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $50,000 to put in that sidewalk. And who does it benefit? Very few people. It, it devalues it. And then somebody's got to take care of it, and then you have issues, and it, we just have not had good luck with it. You know, we're just, I think we're just barely over the block length by 100 and some feet, you know, and then it wouldn't have been an issue, so...
The planning department had made that suggestion and they're going to stick into their guns on that. I mean, are you, would you prefer not to approve it, or would you approve, prefer to approve it with the sidewalk?
I would say we'd prob, I'd ask for you not to approve it because it, it's a big deal. And, and I'd rather, you know, pull back and say, okay, what are we going to do? Because it's a big deal. It, it may not sound like much, but we're ready, I mean, we're going to be selling these, we're going to have to sell these lots for upwards to mid 50s for a new area, you know? That may be good down the road, but when you're first kicking off an area, you're reducing lot prices. You're trying to get people in there. You're trying to build a new neighborhood, you know, and it's hard to get people to start that. So, yeah, it's a big deal. And, and I would rather you delay and don't pass it if it, if it comes down to it.
Just, just to add to that, on the sidewalk easements, and I know Rachel mentioned a 15-foot easement, there's no build areas associated with these pedestrian easements where fences are to not encroach into those areas. And it's more than 15 feet of an impact when you actually look at the, the impacts of one of these sidewalks. And this is, this is from up in Waterfoot Estates where we had some significantly greater block lengths, and there was a, there was a connected sidewalk path that connect to roads on each end and made, made good sense to build it in that location. And, and you're seeing a 25-foot no-build swath to accommodate that sidewalk. And this one's just recently got built as of last year. And so we, if it was in a location where we thought that it really made good pedestrian sense, we would be supportive of it and we would be showing it. But in this case, we would request your support in eliminating 1.1.7.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to call these separately?
Yes, we do. Need to call these separately. This will be the vote on item 3.1A, change of zone number 16044. And this is staff recommendation of approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Core.
Okay.
Beckis.
Is that with or without the amendment or the striking?
As written by the planning department, but that, the change of zone doesn't have any...
Oh, okay. Oh, we're responding, change of zone, got it.
Yep.
Right. Discussion?
I'm going to talk about both at once if that's okay.
That'd be fine.
Um, I, I have no problems with the change of zone. It makes sense to me to make it all one zoning instead of kind of dividing this in half. But I do have concerns about the preliminary plat. I, I, I will not support waiving that easement on Block 7. I think that it's important to have that. In fact, if I had my druthers, I would, I would just connect that court all the way over to Plainsman Drive, and, and that way we don't have a, have a cul-de-sac at all. It just goes all the way through. We have to have a sidewalk. Connectivity is there. I'm also hesitant about, I mean, I know the planning department was fine with it, but I have a problem with the Block 8 and not requiring a sidewalk there, mainly because I see that Outlet D there, and I think that it would be very easy to redesign this so that there could be a sidewalk going down, down there or squishing the lots over and changing the, the road design. I think some things can be done to this plan where we don't have all these waivers for, for no sidewalks because sidewalks are very important. So I, I won't support the waiver for the, for the Block 7 sidewalk.
Other comments?
I have a comment. First, I want to commend the developer for requesting a down zone. I think that anything that moves us to a little bit of a lower density in these areas is a good idea. I think the neighbors raised some very good points, though, about transition ground, buffers between existing and new development. Only, it's not so much that the people who live there now need to have the, the buffer, but what I find is that we, there's a large number of complaints for people who move into the rural edge because they don't, they haven't already comprehended that they're going to be living in a rural area, and they don't like the dust or the agricultural activities, and they start to make complaints. And there's no reason to add any more pressure on the folks who live there now. They moved out there when it was zoned ag, ag residential. How they live is how they've made the choice. We move in higher density urban. I think it's really dependent upon the people who are moving in to get used to the fact that they live next to an ag residential or an ag area. So I would encourage any kind of transition or buffer landscaping, perhaps winrows or something to help the new owners learn to live with a greater amount of dust.
I'm going to support this one. I, I'm going to, I don't agree with Tracy on the, on the sidewalk issue. I do think that with this being a new property, a new location where it is hard to start a development, you need to have some, some opportunities there to, to save some money. But at any rate, that's our vote.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is on the change of zone 16044. Staff recommendation is for approval. Okay, Beckis?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, the next vote is on item 3.1B, preliminary plat number 16088. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the city clerk within 14 days of approval. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval.
Entertained a motion?
Move approval? Core?
And that's not as amended?
Right.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I actually have to ask a clarification. You said approval, but you said not as amended.
That's correct.
So as it's written?
As it's written with, without the sidewalk. Is that correct?
No.
Or with the sidewalk?
It's written with the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, with the sidewalk. I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah. So is there a second?
Second, Washington.
Okay. Is everybody clear on the, how to vote?
We don't need any more discussion?
If, if I would like to, I, I'm a little, I'm torn here because the developer has said that if we were to keep the sidewalk or the requirement for the pedestrian way, the developer would prefer if we actually turned this down.
That's correct.
Wanted to say it out loud so that I...
Either way, I mean, even if we approve it as is with no sidewalk, he'd still have to do some rearranging.
Or with the sidewalk. Right now, we'd be approving it with the sidewalk, and that's the vote, so...
Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay. Beckis?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
No.
Finnegan?
No.
Harris?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
And Hove?
No.
Motion failed, four to three. So we'll need another motion?
Yes.
Move approval with the, um, striking, and correct me if I'm wrong, 1.1.7?
Seven, correct. Is there a second?
Second. Finnegan.
Any questions about this? Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for preliminary plat number 16088, deleting condition 1.1.7. Okay, Beckis?
Yes.
Core?
So now I'm all confused. If I vote no, that's against...
It would not, you would not be in favor of deleting that condition?
No.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
No.
And Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two. Okay. Moving on to the next item. Is, okay, under comprehensive plan conformance, item one, or 4.1 is comprehensive plan conformance number 16014, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to add the 11th MP Hotel and Lincoln Commercial Club redevelopment project. The proposed 11th MP Hotel and Lincoln Commercial Club redevelopment project would remove blighted and substandard conditions through the renovation of two downtown Lincoln's older buildings, including the Lincoln Commercial Club building at 200 North 11th Street and the property at 216 North 11th Street. This project would restore many favorable historical exterior facade features of the Lincoln Commercial Club building, including renovations of the Great Banquet Room on the third floor and revamping the fourth floor into hotel rooms and private residential dwellings in context with the historical past. In addition, a potential fifth floor may be added for future downtown residential units. The existing first floor restaurant is expected to continue to occupy the first floor while the second floor would be updated into commercial office space. The 216 North 11th Street building project will include the renovation of the current four stories and the addition of three new stories, resulting in a seven-story building which will house a high-end boutique hotel with approximately 32 hotel rooms and a first-floor restaurant and/or lounge. The project area is located at 200 North 11th Street and 216 North 11th Street, including the adjacent right-of-ways of property generally bounded by North 11th, North 12th, P and Q Streets. The Lincoln Center redevelopment plan area is generally bounded by Salt Creek, Interstate I-80, or 180, I'm sorry, and R Street on the north, 17th Street on the east, G Street on the south, and Salt Creek and Second Street, and Cent Valley Boulevard on the west. Staff recommendation is conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this application?
I see none. David?
Thank you. Members of the Planning Commission, David Landis, the Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. We are asking eventually the city council to amend our downtown master plan to allow for a description of a project that we're working on towards the end of creating a redevelopment agreement and some downtown development. That intersects with your obligations because your need, you need to weigh in on the question of whether... of whether or not what we're asking for in the way of an amendment is in conformance with our, our comprehensive plan. The planning department thinks it is. We would agree, and we hope you will as well. The project that we're describing, and it's not the specific terms of the project, it's a general description of where we intend eventually to get to, is to alter two of our existing structures. And the amendment applies in the areas that are cross-hatched. There we are. So, our plan amendment affects this cross-hatched area.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
Zoom out? Was it, oh, no.
The other one.
The other way. Better?
Yep.
Good enough? Okay. So, we're talking about this space of right-of-way, but this is the area of private investment. This is the Commercial Club Building. This is the building that used to house the Gallup Call Center years ago. One of its initial renderings was when the Commercial Club was new after the turn of this century. Well, this beautiful old building now has misties at this location on the corner. It also has a beautiful banquet hall up here that's almost never used with ceilings that are over 20 feet high. I've lived here for 68 years, and I've seen it once. That's how rarely this is used. And we're going to revive this gorgeous piece of, of asset eventually with this project. The downtown master plan and the comprehensive plan focuses on a number of ideas. And the comp plan says the downtown should be a central location for commerce, government, and entertainment and the arts. Well, I think this supports all of those uses. If it's a hotel close to the Grand Theater and the Leeds Center and the like, we'll have more usage for downtown entertainment center. For commerce, there's a first-floor retail. And of course, the hotel itself would be commerce as well. We promote the downtown as a vibrant mixed-use neighborhood. Well, there's going to be residential use here. There'll be choices for residential lifestyles. That's in the comp plan. That occurs in this case as well. We're offering mixed-use redevelopment and adaptive reuse. We are adapting this building. And it will be mixed-use between the use of, of entertainment and existing retail and the commercial developments that are involved. The downtown master plan says that we should be encouraging the rehabilitation and renovation of existing structures. And that's exactly what's going on here. Also, the desire for a vibrant retail presence. In the end, what we hope to get is to restore the historical facade of this building. There are elements that either through the years have been gone or were never done that would like to be added by the developer. That would be a lovely addition. We'd like to have the renovation and the availability of the banquet room, the revamping of the fourth floor of the Commercial Club into hotel rooms and private residential, another set of options for downtown living. It's possible that the fifth floor may be added for future downtown residential units. And downtown residency is a positive in both the comp plan and the downtown master plan. This is actually three different owners feeding together simultaneously. One of the owners wants to build a boutique, high-end hotel in the, what was the, the Gallup Call Center by adding three floors at the top, 32 hotel rooms, a first-floor restaurant and lounge. And that means more active space and more active streetscape, which is a positive as far as the city's concerned. A skywalk to connect this structure to parking. And additional improvements to the 11th Street right-of-way. It has been to the Urban Design Committee. The Urban Design Committee voted on January 10th to approve the project. They did give some recommendations for the pedestrian design on 11th Street itself. Those recommendations will be taken into consideration when the developer and the city continue to meet as we do week by week. The developer's here and happy to tell their story and give whatever renderings they would like to flesh out the story. Eventually, if we can self-describe this project and conclude that it's consistent with the comp plan, and then the city council amend the underlying documents to comport with what we're asking for, we will return with a redevelopment agreement for this project with a, a more specific delineation of what we intend to do and what is being asked for by the developer. However, we can tell you that this looks to be about $7 to $8 million of investment. And this is a matter for the use of tax increment financing, roughly in the amount of $1,400,000. I'd be happy to answer questions for you. And I would like to tell you that the developer's here and able to carry out any further delineation of specific questions you might have on design or their intents and purposes for the project.
Questions for David?
Just one, and this may be what you referred to with the pedestrian traffic. But could you talk a little bit about kind of check-in traffic into the hotel? And as it, how it jives with traffic in general? And on a Leeds Center night?
Sure, our current thinking is to take about three angled parking stalls directly in front of the hotel and essentially allowing the hotel to use this for immediate check-in. And then it's quite likely that the developer will have some valet service to the parking garage that's on that block, but not immediately there. We shouldn't confuse this with a 100-room hotel. This is a 32-room boutique hotel. The ideal usage is for things like weddings and special events where you'll use the banquet room. You use some of the hotel space around it for the wedding party and the like, and the guests filling the hotel. So, their parking needs with respect to that are to use angled parking stalls but dedicated for the use of the hotel. And to the extent that that's been discussed in a specific design element, I would nominate the idea of using the developer to identify where we are in the, in the negotiation of that process. But that's where we're at, at the current time in thinking how we'd solve that problem.
I have just a follow-up question to that. Have you done any analysis of how much that garage is already used? And, you know, I think that there probably are spots during the day usually, but Leeds Center nights, special event nights, that, that garage is full and there's a waiting.
Downtown garages are, are, are filled. And there will be the desire to have a, a redevelopment agreement with some spaces, although 32 spaces over the course of 18 months to two years of construction would allow for the, the prioritized status that a redevelopment agreement gives the developer. They start from zero, but as attrition occurs, their, their rights are accumulated. What doesn't happen is that we kick somebody out of the garage. But when somebody leaves, we'll take that space and we'll put it into the, this is part of the redevelopment process. This is the B4 zoning. And downtown is an area, unlike many other parts of the city, where the city has assumed some responsibility for parking obligations. If you're in South Point or some other location, the development itself provides parking. Here, that's not the case. And so, we assume that responsibility. And this is a pattern that we've used. We used it, for example, the two hotels that we did close to the Haymarket Garage. Were given rights in that garage. We used attrition to get to their needs. And we also opened up the, the liner, the lumberworks garage at a lower price. And that encouraged people to walk over and do a little, walk a little more and park a little different and save some money. And that created spaces to accommodate those hotels. It is, it is the common practice, with one exception, I'll tell you about in a moment, in which hotels do have parking rights in our garages. The only one that I think doesn't is the Holiday Inn on 9th Street. I think that's the exception.
Do you foresee staff parking also in the garage?
We would anticipate that, that we would, we would, there would be a number of redevelopment agreement promised slots, which our parking management now says over the time between now and when the hotel would be open, would become available through natural attrition. It's not uncommon for some people to have maybe a manager or two. But generally speaking, employees are not, we're not, that's not what we're talking about. A hotel wants to be able to guarantee somebody who comes for a room that they will have one. Employees generally in this town search for an available parking space that they can rent. They're walking further than they'd like to with a system that is as burdened as ours is at the moment. They'd love to be closer to work. But we are accommodating downtown employees. It is a pleasant fact of life that makes things more difficult that we have a growing downtown with more employment. And that does create pressures on our parking system. Our biggest user for parking is NellNet. And NellNet has more than 1,000 stalls for their employees, generally. That's good for us because it fills our garages. But it also creates the fact that you don't always get into the garage that's right next to your job. Sometimes it's three blocks away. And you wait for the day when the garage that's next to you is open. And that phenomenon is there right now.
And I'm more concerned, I think, about special events. And Leeds Center brings a lot of elderly people who can't walk three blocks to the garage. And just to make sure that we have enough slots to accommodate special events and the hotel.
We do have a special arrangement with Leeds Center, and it's produced some tension. And that is that you can valet park. And then we save some hooded spaces right by that building. And when they don't get used, we have a public that says, "Why have you given those parkings for exactly that purpose? I would love to park there, and it's empty, and it's less than half a block away. Why did you do that?" And our answer is, so that we can have an answer for the question that you've given us. I will tell you now, we never get it right. For everybody.
That's right.
Other questions?
David, why is the redevelopment area so large when this is just the one?
It's only large in the sense that it does create, it does have city right-of-way. One of the things that we have is sometimes you dig up utilities and maybe you want to do a utility repair further than that. Or it might have streetscape implications. A private development may have carryover impacts in city land. And we'd like to be able to use the resources created by the tax increment financing to not only meet the needs of the private developer, but also the needs of the city if, if we need to replace some, some utilities or change a, a four-inch pipe to an eight-inch pipe. Or in the downtown area where we have a, a, a utility system that's older. There are places downtown that we have clay pipes that are 90 years old. If a developer goes down to those areas, we'd like to get rid of as much of that, those 90-year-old clay pipes and turn them into new, modern, standard piping as much as possible. And this, this spider effect allows us to at least consider that. There may be resources created over time that might be able to be used by the city to do some of those effects. So, we do try to look ahead for the possibility of minimizing public costs when we're assisting a particular developer in their project.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
The applicant here?
Good afternoon. Kent Seacrest, 1111 Lincoln Mall, representing three developers and two buildings. And we are tying them together. Eventually, they'll be condominiumized, and we can share elevators and stairwells to make the redevelopment project go forward. I'll just show you a couple more images. This is actually one of Lincoln's oldest buildings. Nobody knows that. They put a skin that is unremovable. So, we can't go back to the original skin. But that is built in, originally in 1880s. This is 1916. And as David described, there you see that skin updated. And we are adding three floors to the top of the building so we can get the 32 rooms to be on this part. But we share back and forth. David mentioned the, what I call the 1916 building. There's what it used to look like. Misties is still, occupies the first floor. And David mentions the great ballroom. And that is the great ballroom, and it's amazingly there. And so, the idea is wedding events between the hotel goes back and forth. There was a question about access on parking. I just thought I had that image, but maybe I don't. We show three. Oh, here it is. Nope. I missed that. We have three parking stalls out front, and we have a canopy go over parts of those three parking stalls. And so, that's how the patrons will come in and out into the area. We have, very excited to take three old buildings, or two old buildings with three different developers and put Humpty Dumpty back together again. And as David wisely said, particularly for the four new members, and again, congratulations, you're a saint. You won't be underpaid. But just like the traditional experts that have been around have been underpaid. But this is one of those weird. Normally, you get to get into a lot of details, but the law just says one question. Is this in conformance with the comp plan? I suppose it'd be, the only choice is to say it's against the comprehensive plan. And I would think that would be a hard finding to make. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Do you have any pictures of that? So, is the, the drop-off, is that going to be on 11th Street or on P Street?
It's on 11th Street. I thought I had an image.
And I know that the, the Urban Design Committee was talking about, you know, having some bollards up to kind of prevent someone from just driving up in there accidentally.
I do have the image. These are the three stalls, and this canopy comes out. And these are those bollards. We would redo the curb, so it's not, it's a rollover curb. So, you could have a suitcase out here and roll over the curb, have a little canopy if the weather's rainy. So, and these, again, because it's a rollover curb, we want to be sure the cars don't roll over too and hit pedestrians. So, that's what we're talking about. They will have lighting for pedestrians. So, people will be able to be sure to pass safely.
Any other questions from Mr. Seacrest? You.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Does any one have questions for staff? Any rebuttal from the applicant? No, good. Entertained a motion?
Move conformance with the comprehensive plan. Core?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think what David presented was, you know, exactly right on. It does, you know, fit into our comp plan. And there's no real question about that, so.
Anything else? I think this is an exciting plan. I think it's a great collaboration of, as I said, three developers in two buildings. And we'll be anxious to see how the result comes out. So, Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay. Beckyus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, next item, under text amendments. We have two associated text amendments. I will call for public, public hearing at the same time. Text amendment number 16017, amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code Zoning Ordinance by amending Section 27.06 to delete certain commercial and industrial uses in the B4 District by amending Section 27.25.080 relating to O1 Office District to provide that applications for a building permit shall be reviewed for compliance with sub-area design standards by amending Section 27.35.080 relating to B4 Lincoln Center Business District to provide that, that applications for a building permit shall be reviewed for compliance with sub-area design standards and to review Figure 27.35.070A B4 Lincoln Center Business District Height Regulations, which has been superseded by Figure 27.72.030A by amending Section 27.60, or 56.017 relating to the Capital Environments District by amending Sections 27.56.120 and 27.57.150 to revise the timeframe for an application by amending Section 27.56.160 to change street references from South. from South 15th Street to Goodhue Boulevard and to clarify the building height by amending Section 27.62.040 to delete dwelling units as a conditional use in the B4 zoning district by amending Section 27.63.175 to provide that parking garages allowed by special permit in the O1 District shall not abut Capital Square or J Street west of 9th Street by amending Figure 27.67.020 to provide that there is no required parking in the B4 District by repealing Section 27.67.050 to delete the B4 District's special parking requirements by amending Section 27.69.404, or 4040 relating to the maximum height of any freestanding signs by amending Section 27.72.030 relating to height and lot regulations in the B4 District to expand the exception to the general building height requirements and modify general yard requirements by amending Figure 27.72.030A in Section 27.72.030 to reduce the maximum heights from 275 to 75 feet for properties located in the B4 District on the northwest corner of 9th and P Streets and the southwest corner of 9th and O Streets and amending Chapter 4.36 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the Urban Design Committee by amending Sections 4.36.010, and 4.36.070 to make minor modifications and revisions to the process and duties of the committee and repealing appropriate sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is for conditional, or I'm sorry, approval. The next item is Item 4.2B, text amendment number 16018, amending Title 1, General Provisions of the City of Lincoln Design Standards to modify the procedures regarding waivers and amending Title 3, Lincoln Design Standards by amending Chapter 3.75 Neighborhood Design Standards, Chapter 3.76, Lincoln Downtown Design Standards, and Chapter 3.85, Capital Environs Design Standards, and by adding a new Chapter 3.77 to adopt South Haymarket Design Standards to make minor modifications, amend design standards, and modify the procedures and repealing Section 2 of Chapter 1, Section 5 of Chapter 3.75, Sections 1 through 5 of Chapter 3.76, and Sections 2, 3, and 4 of Chapter 3.85. Staff recommendation is approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. It's a big mouthful.
Thank you. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. I think I'll lead off with the first item and then turn it over to Stacy. As Jerry mentioned, these are text amendments, so we're not changing the zoning boundaries or zoning districts. We're proposing to amend the text. And these text amendments stem from recommendations contained in the South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan and would include the B4 and O1 zoning district areas as well as specific South Haymarket area changes. So 27.06, that's the use group chapter. Those changes essentially pertain to the removal of heavy commercial or industrial uses or other uses that are not consistent or found in the existing B4 today. In summary, changes to 27.25 and 27.35, which reflect or pertain to the O1 Office District and B4 District. Those would add sub-area design standards reflective of the South Haymarket Design Standards. There are changes proposed to 27.56 and 27.57, which pertain to the Capital Environs District as well as the Historic Preservation Commission, in part to reflect current practice, also to make adjustments to height and area regulations. There are changes proposed to the Household Living Use Group in the B4 District for east of 17th Street as well as parking garages in the O1 District. And then the proposed parking change as far as the existing parking regulation under 27.67. The gray shaded area is the existing B4 area that is exempt or not required to provide parking for developments. The hashed area, or diagonal line area, is the area where there are requirements, which is generally 150 feet east of 17th Street excluding the O Street corridor. And then this proposed telegraph district, were it not for this proposed text amendment, their PUD would be proposing an exclusion or exemption from parking requirements. So what we're suggesting here is that it would make sense to have a global B4 parking exemption. 27.69, that's an amendment to the sign chapter, basically to mirror or match what was done for the Antelope Valley as far as freestanding sign height, where there's an eight-foot height limit on the east side of downtown. This would be an eight-foot height limit for freestanding signs in conjunction with South Haymarket. Changes to 27.72 pertaining to hot, excuse me, height and lot regulations. And then also the height limitations. Another exhibit here that shows the proposed height change, which would be for two areas. One which would be at the northwest corner of 9th and P. The other would be at the southwest corner of 9th and O. There are four proposed, or excuse me, four property owners affected by the proposed change, which is to change the height limit from 275 to 75 feet. And the rationale for this has to do with consistency as far as the height. If you look, you know, west of 9th Street, generally the height limit is 75 feet. And so that's the rationale for proposing to change the height limit from the 275 to the 75. There was a letter of opposition received from the Noize Art Gallery property, which is at the southwest area of O and 9th, where they are opposed to this change. And I would mention, because it's not in this particular staff report, there is a provision under the current existing ordinance for a special permit for a height exception. And that would include potentially the B4. So if this was changed, this height limit was reduced to 75 feet for these affected areas, potentially that someone could apply for a height exception under the special permit process. Finally, Chapter 4 changes are basically pertaining to the Urban Design Committee and are largely reflective of current practice. I mentioned the specific property owners for the height change were notified. Also, as general outreach effort, all the property owners in the South Haymarket District were notified. The Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation, the Downtown Lincoln Association, and Lincoln Independent Business Association. With that, I can answer any specific questions for the first item.
Yes, Tracy.
On the height thing. So how, how high are those? Like, I'm thinking of the Holiday Inn on 9th and O. Aren't they already over 275 feet? They're in the middle, right?
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. This property in between, where the hotel is, exceeds the 75 feet, and that's not proposed to be changed. The rationale for that is, the proposal is to not create a nonconforming situation, but the four affected properties are within the 75-feet limit.
So it's only on the corners?
Correct. It would include, at the southwest corner of 9th and O, the art gallery property, parking building. And then at the northwest corner of 9th and P would be the gas station, the Phillips 66, and the old Chicago building.
So only four owners are, right now, would be affected by this?
Correct.
And let's go back to the first question. How tall is the Holiday Inn?
I don't know that I know the exact height.
I know it's higher than 16 stories because I rappelled down it.
Everybody gets to say they do that.
I know. That's why I wanted to say it. You don't have to put that in the minutes, though.
So we know it's at least 160 feet, but probably taller. Okay.
Other questions? Maya.
So I've already talked to George and Stacy a little bit about this. And I had some questions with respect to the Urban Design Committee appeals process. And I think you referred to it as Chapter 4. And one of my questions was, in the proposed language on Chapter 6, line 12, where it's line 11 and 12, it talks about the project director for a public project or the owner or the owner's architect for private projects which require design review shall submit information or striking to the Chair of the Urban Design Committee and instead saying to the Planning Department "on behalf of the Urban Design Committee," et cetera. And I had some questions about the choice, the choice of "on behalf of" in that sentence because to me, that indicates that you're acting as an agent of the Urban Design Committee or doing it in their stead, whereas I believe that the intent is to submit information to the committee via the Planning Department. So I'm questioning whether it would make sense to, and Stacy and I talked about this a little bit, perhaps just saying submitting it to the Planning Department and then it is implied that it will go to the Urban Design Committee or specifying that the Planning Department will, shall direct or forward the information to the Urban Design Committee.
Yeah, and we're okay with either of those changes.
Do you have a preference?
I mean, it may be clear to just say to the Planning Department. I guess that would be.
Do you agree, George?
I would concur with Stacy.
Okay. Then I had a couple of other questions that are more about the process. There's, let's see here, on page 7, it changes the language of those public projects selected for review. It previously said "shall be reviewed at least twice." And you're suggesting changing it to "are recommended to be reviewed at least twice." And I'm wondering, in that scenario, what are the criteria? What, as a developer, what, when can you expect to be reviewed twice? And because obviously, this is opening, adding a little more flexibility to the language.
Right. I think a lot of the changes in Chapter 4.36 are really to reflect what the current practices are. It has in there a requirement to go to two meetings, but it's really at the discretion right now of the Urban Design Committee. If they feel they have enough information at the first meeting to make a recommendation, then they typically do so. And if they feel that they need more time or that they need more information, then they ask them to come back.
Do you see any danger of it being perceived as arbitrary? Then who gets the kind of double review and who doesn't? Especially if we're in an appeals process where you may feel, you know, this person got to do this and I didn't. And maybe if I had had two reviews or if I had one review, it would have been a different outcome. What do you think?
I don't really see any problem with that. I don't know if maybe Ed has a little more insight.
The reason I'm asking is since it's an appeals process, kind of you're at a point where you want to know what your rights are and what to expect. So that's, I appreciate adding the flexibility because I think that's what you're trying to do. I'm just kind of, you know, out of genuine interest, I'm interested in, you know, what are your rights and how are they set out in the ordinance?
The problem we perceived was we've, in past several years, given Urban Design Committee several review, several appeal assignments without their ordinance reflecting really any procedure on which to conduct it. We've not had a problem with that, but we just perceived in this update of the ordinances, that was looser than it should be for the very reasons you cite. It hasn't caused any difficulty. I think the committee, when we set up these citizen committees with these assignments, there is a trust of that committee embedded in that. And I think our design boards have done very well with those responsibilities. I think giving the flexibility to mandate to would say, if the committee is completely satisfied, has all the information they need on the first, they still are going to have to require you to come back a second time, which does not seem logical. But to say that they could not be asked to come back if, with a recommended change, they felt they might be able to approve it, the flexibility, I think, benefits both parties, both the review body. It states there would not be more than two reviews. And so I think that would establish the parameters that you're looking for. But that flexibility, I think, can be very useful. Committee has sometimes asked for it, especially if there wasn't enough information at the first or when there was a solid recommendation at the first that would change it to something that could be approved but really needed to be incorporated into the discussion to make that a valid vote. So I think the flexibility is better, you know, overall program of making it more clear how they conduct their reviews now that we've given their appeals, now that we've given them that assignment.
And so in practicality, is it pretty consistent that if something's very straightforward, one review is enough? And then if, is it sort of across the board? If a topic is a little bit more complicated than across the board, the double review will be carried out? And it's kind of the same for everyone?
The practice has been that the committee most often handles things in one meeting. Much like this body, how often do you ask somebody to come back two weeks later just because? You don't. You handle it when it is sufficient, and it is before you. I think the Urban Design Committee has done the same. And most often, that has been one review.
Did, have you had any pushback at all to these proposed changes from the development community? Any concerns or questions?
No, I haven't heard any.
Nor have I.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks very much.
I have some, sorry.
Sorry.
And this might be George. I'm not sure. If I'm reading this right, the area that's encompassing this here has the old, like the old Metal Gold Building down on, I can't remember what street that is exactly. Maybe it's J. And I know that, so that's kind of an old, more of a manufacturing-type facility. So here on out, anything that wants to go in those buildings cannot be any of those businesses that were listed in this. You know, like, they couldn't put a Metal Gold-type facility back in there.
As far as the use group changes, heavy, generally those are heavier commercial, like truck stops, truck terminals, coal yards, creameries, et cetera. Those uses could not be reestablished or started if this ordinance is approved in the existing B4. This is not changing the boundaries of the B4. This is just changing the text pertaining to the B4.
So anything that's in industrial now?
Could keep that use.
Would maintain that.
Right.
And so if it was sold to somebody else and they wanted to do industrial there, they could do that.
Right. If it's an existing industrial area and not an existing B4. I mean, I think the plan itself, the South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan, identified that for the most part, these uses are not in the existing B4.
Right.
Okay, this is kind of a stupid question. Is O1 across the city, or is it located in just like the downtown, like the B4 is?
The O1, and actually, that's a good point, because some of this is forward-thinking. The O1 district west of Ninth Street, as it's envisioned in this ordinance, doesn't yet exist. And maybe Stacy can add, as far as other O1 areas.
In Lincoln today, O1 is generally, the area along Lincoln Mall is O1. There's some on the west side of Ninth Street that are mostly publicly-owned properties, like around J Street. But yeah, it's generally around the downtown area, mostly south.
And I kind of want to go back to that height thing. So if Ms. Noyes decides that she wants to add a floor or two to her building, you're saying that she could apply for an exception to do that, even if this were passed?
Based under the current ordinance, there is a special permit, yes, for height exception, which would include B4. There have been a few cases, and this was prior to my time being here, but yes, she could.
To clarify, the height limit is proposed to seventy-five feet. Her building is well below seventy-five feet. So she could add several stories up to seventy-five feet without needing a special permit. It'd only be if the proposal for a new building was going to be well beyond seventy-five, or even a little bit beyond seventy-five, there is the special permit. We've had other projects on vacant land come forward that have shown what they intend to do, the reasons for being above that height limit, and have had the special permit approved. The main reason for saying the seventy-five is the rest of the block has a seventy-five-foot height limit. The same on the northwest corner of Ninth and P. The rest of the block is at seventy-five, and we think it makes a much better development pattern to have those two blocks be all of a similar height, seventy-five feet or below, than to have one-quarter of the block be at two-seventy-five.
Sure, so if I'm remembering correctly, her building right now is maybe two or three stories. So she's maybe like at thirty feet.
Probably in that range or less.
So even if she decided to display artwork on her rooftop, she would still be well below, more than likely, the seventy-five feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Ask a quick question here, Steve. Sorry. Currently, the owner can, of that specific property, can build to two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet without any special permit, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Questions? Anything else?
You mentioned the sign tables, or the change with regard to the signage. Are, would there be any non-conforming uses if that change were to be made?
I'm not aware of any, Stacy can chime in.
I don't believe so.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? You're the applicant, or?
Oh, I'm going to present on TX One Six Zero One Eight.
Okay.
Associated.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm going to just take a little step back here. So the South Hay Market Neighborhood Plan was adopted by City Council in December of 2015. And these two text amendments, the one ending in One Seven that George presented, is all of the changes to the ordinance. And then this next one that I'll talk a little more about, ending in One Eight, are changes to the city's design standards. And this is really the first step in implementation of the South Hay Market Neighborhood Plan. I'll just give you an idea, here's a map from the plan, it's showing South Hay Market's location. This green area is Historic Hay Market, so it's just south of Historic Hay Market, generally bounded by O and G Streets, and Tenth and Fourth Streets. The plan includes eight goals, and one of those is to implement site and building design standards. And it also talks about making changes to the zoning ordinance. The main goal really is to transition South Hay Market into a more residential neighborhood with a mix of uses. And one of the ways to do that is to implement design standards. So there are existing design standards in Lincoln today, and they already apply to this area in South Hay Market. The downtown design standards apply by zoning, so they apply to anything that's zoned B4 or O1. You can see, this is all within the South Hay Market Neighborhood Plan area. So this area up here is zoned B4, so that already follows downtown design standards today. The Capital Environs District is an overlay district, so it's not dependent on zoning. And generally, it's the area around the Capitol, and the area adjacent to Centennial Mall, and Lincoln Mall, and J Street, and also Goodhue Boulevard. So that extends within South Hay Market, and it's the block north and south of J Street, and it goes over to Fifth Street. Then we also have neighborhood design standards, which apply to anything with an R zoning district within the nineteen-fifties city boundary. So those aren't going to change, those design standards. What we're proposing is that the area of the B4 and O1 zoning districts, that's located within the area here, that's highlighted as South Hay Market design standards, which is essentially south of O Street, and west of, a hundred-and-fifty feet west of Ninth Street, so that the Ninth and Tenth Street frontage still follow downtown design standards. The rest would follow South Hay Market design standards. And because those apply by zoning, if it's not zoned B4 or O1 today, they wouldn't have to follow these design standards until they would rezone to one of those zoning districts. So the South Hay Market design standards are for site and building design, and they're based largely on the downtown design standards. We did write them to allow a little more flexibility for things like building materials, roof type setbacks. Because it's more of a, we envision as a more residential neighborhood than core downtown. Like the downtown design standards of South Hay Market, standards would apply to new construction and major remodels of projects. The site development standards require things like buildings being oriented to streets, with entrances along the streets, and with parking and driveways located behind buildings. And then the building design standards, just similar to downtown, include things like building materials, transparency, and those kinds of things. The South Hay Market design standards that we've drafted also include standards for streetscapes. So in South Hay Market, what's happening in the right-of-way today is pretty unorganized. There's not a lot of on-street parking with meters and sidewalks and that kind of thing. So we have standards for when work is already being done in the streets, outside of routine maintenance. And we'd like them to follow this set of streetscape standards. And those include, let me see. And those standards are generally broken down into three areas. The pedestrian zone with the sidewalk, the planting zone, which would be a planting area for street trees, and then a parking zone with angled on-street parking. So the text amendment would also include changes to the waiver and appeal process relating to downtown design standards, neighborhood design standards, and then also South Hay Market design standards, making them all consistent, and kind of streamlining the process, also to line up with what our current practices are as well. In December, the Capital Environs Commission reviews the proposed changes to Capital Environs' design standards. We sort of had a working session, and made a bunch of changes. Those items are mostly cleanup. They're adding new standards that align with South Hay Market Neighborhood Plan for the J Street corridor west of Ninth Street. Standards for buildings and landscaping of that portion of the street that are similar to other residentially-zoned malls like Goodhue Boulevard. But they reviewed those, and recommended their approval of that. And then also in December, at December Sixth, Urban Design Committee reviewed more the whole package of design standards and zoning changes, and they also recommended their approval. Do you have any questions on the design standards?
Questions for Stacy?
Yeah. On J Street, and then Goodhue as well, what is the, why is twenty feet of a height minimum a magic number?
Um, I, I'm just kidding, no, don't put that. I think what we were doing is, because it's more of single-family residential districts, because I think the height limit was thirty, the minimum height. And so we were lessening it to reflect more of the single-family-type pattern.
Correct.
That makes sense.
I was under the impression that previously, that there was no height minimum, and that this is actually putting one in at twenty.
If I'm remembering correctly, and maybe Ed can help. I think there, I thought there was a minimum for, that maybe just said the malls. I'll try to look it up.
You look it up, and I'll, I'll do rain delay.
Because I think there was a minimum on the other two malls.
There's been a minimum in the downtown design standards, as long as we've had the downtown design standards, on a notion that it's an area that should have a certain density, it should have a certain level of investment, and that single-story buildings in most of these areas are not appropriate, directly on the malls. That we're trying to envision a long-term urban design change to these areas that have a certain sense of enclosure to those spaces, and a certain level of investment as well. And I think that's also why, in the downtown design standards, we have a twenty-foot minimum, that downtown just isn't an area for single-story buildings. Or if it is, it's a tall, single-story building. And I think that's worked well in the downtown design standards. I think that's part of what has brought us to the same on this area, that they're both a maximum, which is common in all the design, in all the zoning areas, but in these areas, even a minimum, because a certain level of investment is desirable.
Dared. Okay.
Any other questions? Tom, anything else?
No, not this time.
All right, thank you. And you are the applicant, right? Yes. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Please come forward.
First of all, thank you for allowing me the right to speak. I'm Julia Noyes, I'm a small business owner. I've had the Noyes Art Gallery for twenty-four years, working with volunteers. So I know what it's like to be a volunteer and to work with volunteers, thank you. For the record, I would like to state that I am against the extreme height reduction ordinance being proposed for my property.
Julia, could we get your address, please?
One-nineteen South Ninth.
Thank you.
I would like the current two-hundred-and-seventy-five feet maintained. So here, I am right here, just north, a few blocks from here. And what I would like to see is fair, equal, and consistent. Here's going to be the Graduate Hotel, and I was told two-hundred feet is the height. They're my neighbors, right here. Right across the street, on this corner, will be the Mixed Use Development Megaplex, which will be two-hundred-plus feet. These are my neighbors, to the north directly, and to the east directly. My location is an extremely hot property. It's located less than half a block from O Street, actually seventy-five steps. This compelling location could have strong redevelopment value at the height of two-hundred-and-seventy-five. My resale value would be extremely cut by such a dramatic cut of two-hundred feet. This is taking away my actual rights by knocking off potential sales. This is taking ownership rights. The height reduction would highly diminish the value of my property. You have to agree with that, I would think, looking at my neighborhood. As you know, in all likelihood, the value of my property will go up as the Hay Market area continues to be developed. Is there any compensation for the taking of my right to develop my property? A seventy-five-foot heights building is not commercially compelling at this location for commercial development, not with these neighbors beside me. I'm not a professional realtor, but I wonder, what would my loss be if this ordinance went forward? Five-hundred thousand dollars? Seven-hundred thousand dollars? Nine-hundred thousand dollars? In the potential for me to resell this property? By eliminating two-hundred feet, and just leaving me seventy-five feet, that's not much. So if I baked an apple pie, and you said, three-fourths of it, seventy-three percent approximately, I couldn't use for resale, I would only have a fourth of the pie that I get to sell for a potential buyer? That's a huge reduction. I'm asking, could this be stricken from this amendment for the B4 height reduction for my property? And also, I'd like to speak for my neighbors that have a little parking lot next door. I thank you for your help on this. I'm Julia Noyes, Noyes Art Gallery, One-nineteen South Ninth.
Any questions to Ms. Noyes?
Yes, one.
Okay.
Please don't go into specifics, and please feel free not to answer this question if you don't want to. Have you ever been approached by a developer to potentially purchase your building?
I should probably not answer that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
What don't you like? I think there is a appeal process, or there's a process to grant you the ability to go to two-seventy-five. If this is approved, it allows you to go to two-seventy-five. What don't you like about that?
No, I'm already approved at two-seventy-five. The ordinance would cut me to seventy-five only. So for a potential buyer, why would they want to go through all the red tape of redoing this?
Okay.
Yeah, so the ordinance is, in fact, would cut this two-hundred feet, eliminating seventy-three percent, so...
But there is a process, then, to ask for a waiver?
But Chris, if you were a potential buyer, would you want to go through that? Or come in and say, hey, you know, these people? There's already approval here for your neighbors, there's approval here for your neighbors. Why go through all this, when I'm already approved at two-seventy-five? You know, and I'm at the crossroads of two major highways. I mean, I understand some of these restrictions farther down, but this is the two main highways that come into town.
And I would think that that would be good ammunition to help you get a waiver approved.
Okay, would you clarify waiver, maybe I'm not understanding? Maybe I'm not understanding you the same way.
To go above the 75 feet. If there is a process, I believe that the city has, so that if you would like to go above 75 feet, if this is approved, then you can ask for a waiver to go higher than that.
But what would the advantage be for me not having you, you know, strict this amendment right now, so I would stay at 275? Then it makes it much more appealing property.
True.
So for any commercial person down the road saying, oh, the restriction's 75, we're not even going to talk to her. Somebody else going, oh, 275, we might be interested. And, you know, I've been a small town, a small owner, small business owner for 24 years, so I have the interests at heart in Lincoln and in the arts.
Any other questions?
I think I have a question for Stacy.
Why don't we wait until after?
But I, I will have a question about the height thing, again, for staff.
Okay.
So is it clear? So I'm already approved, I've been at 275 for 24 years, so the new ordinance would cut it to 75, even though my neighbors that directly touch my property are 200 and 200-plus. So to me, that's not very fair or consistent.
When you mentioned the Graduate Hotel, you're talking about the Holiday Inn?
Right. Yeah, am I being unreasonable? I mean, if this were your property, do you think this is unreasonable?
I don't know if we can answer that.
Okay, well, it's just, I'm trying to see what you're thinking.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Mark Hunsaker. I'm here to join Ms. Noyes and her objection to the reduction of height on the two corners.
Why don't you give us your address?
I'm sorry?
Give us your address, please.
600 Wells Fargo Center. I'm here on behalf of Whitehead Oil Company, B&amp;J Partnership, and Arnold Wasenberg. Whitehead Oil owns the service station at Ninth, or yeah, Ninth and P. B&amp;J Partnership owns the old Chicago building next to it. Mr. Wasenberg owns the terminal building and the parking garage at the corner, at the southwest corner of Ninth and O. We object to the reduction in the permissible height on those, on those locations. We think this, these properties have great potential for redevelopment, and this height limitation of 275 has been in place, I believe, at least since 1979. We're now close to realizing some of the potential of these properties, and this kind of drastic height reduction amounts to downzoning them. Consistency, which was cited as the reason for this kind of, this change, is not a sufficient rationale for downzoning. And a special permit to exceed the 75-feet height limitation is not an answer to those objections. I've been involved in the redevelopment of the property at the southeast corner of Ninth and O now for almost two years, and I can tell you that the process of coming to fruition with a fully designed structure of that size is very onerous and time-consuming. And to add to it a layer of going through a process to get a special permit to see if you can actually do what you want to do, only adds to that expense and delays the process even more. We went through that process once, further to the west, on a project that didn't get built in this, along the west side of the Lumberworks Garage. And I can tell you that a lot of money was spent on architectural fees, getting to the point where we could actually show a project that was worthy of getting a height waiver at that location. We really don't want to have to do that again. It's, it's, it's unnecessary. The consistency with the surroundings is really at the 275 level, not at 75. The Holiday Inn isn't going to go away. The Holiday Inn parking garage probably exceeds 75 feet. So we would ask that you strike that provision from this text amendment. I'd try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Hunsaker? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? We have questions for staff.
I did, I think I have one question for staff.
Do you want to come up and testify in opposition?
I don't believe so.
Were you wanting to come up and testify in opposition? No? Okay. I thought you were making moves to come up, sorry.
George and Stacy, I think we have a couple of questions for you. Sandra?
George, I just want to make, certainly I know what the numbers are, so we're talking about four affected property owners here with this change?
Respective of the B4 height change, yes.
Yes, B4, four owners. And I know that you looked at this with, for consistency with the rest of the block with South Haymarket, so with those design standards. But did you take consideration of the major arterials of Ninth and O Street at this one intersection?
Stacy can maybe chime in. I don't know that, we looked at arterials, it was more just the general Ninth Street corridor being kind of a dividing area, if you will, between Haymarket versus the core of downtown. Is that fair, Stacy?
Yes, yeah, I think a higher consideration than it being along Ninth Street was that it was adjacent to historic Haymarket and those buildings that are generally contributing to that district and that character.
If the property owners north of the hotel, along Ninth Street, wanted to build something taller than what exists there today, would they have to go for any special permitting or waiver?
Not as it is today.
Okay. I was just trying to understand the, whether or not they're contributing to the historic district.
Right, although in particular, the old Chicago building, that would be in the landmark district, historic Haymarket landmark district. So, you know, there are certain things that they would have to do, I'm going to Historic Preservation Commission for their review.
Could you, could you talk a little bit about, obviously, we can all kind of imagine the reason why you're trying to avoid really tall buildings close to a historic district, but could you, could you, in your words, say, why you're, why are you trying to avoid them at this location?
I think it's clear when you look at the existing Holiday Inn next to the buildings in historic Haymarket, what impact a building of that height has, and thinking about adding more buildings so close to the three, four-story historic buildings, sort of negatively impacts. But, I mean, we also were thinking, there is the special permit, so maybe it just needs that extra level of review if something should be built to that height or not. And it's already happened, like Mark mentioned, in, in the area, in West Haymarket, not just the previous version of the Liner Building at the Lumberworks Garage that did get approved for a special permit to go higher than the height restriction, but also the Huddle Headquarters Building. So it's really just sort of adding that extra layer of review because it is so close to historic Haymarket.
But you can understand our argument, that then this is another layer that we have to go through to get approval when we don't have that now.
Sure.
Go ahead, Dee.
Did you consider grandfathering then those four properties?
They're the only four that are affected, so...
And three, one of them is within the historic district and is a historic building itself, so, I mean, it would have already additional hoops, but three of the properties don't fall within the historic district or not contributing to the historic district.
Right, and the landmark district.
The landmark, sorry.
I, I only say, I only correct you on that because there is a National Register District that is a little broader. It actually includes the Noyes Gallery as well, as a contributing building to the National Register District, but National Register doesn't have the same regulatory kind of restrictions that the local landmark district does.
No, I appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions? And this would be, I guess, applicant rebuttal at this point, too, so you... Okay. Thank you. We have two items.
Ready to call these items? Okay, this is, are we ready to call?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This will be the vote on text amendment number 16017. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Move approval, Cor.
Is there somebody who wants a second?
If I want to make a friendly amendment, do you do that after a second, or?
Well, we can start discussing if we have something on the floor.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a friendly minute?
Yeah, I was going to propose a friendly amendment to strike the words "on behalf of the Urban Design Committee," page six, line 12. Planning has indicated they're okay with doing that.
You accept that, Tracy?
Sure.
Okay. Other?
Other friendly amendments?
Other friendly amendments? Okay, it's on the table, discussion?
I guess it helps me when we're thinking about this 275 versus 75 feet, that, you know, if you equate about 10 feet to a, to a level, we're talking about seven levels to about 28 levels, and that 28, that's pretty darn high. I don't know if we really even have any buildings except the Capitol that are that high. So I think even if someone was going to redevelop, say, similar to what's being planned for the southeast corner on Ninth and O, I think that they would still have seven to eight possible levels that they could gain on, on these sites. So I'm not terribly opposed to keeping it in there, just because that's quite a few. And then this, the other thing that kind of sways my mind is, they can come and ask for an exception, and I think that in the development process, it's very normal to, to do that. So I, I'm fine with leaving that part in.
I find no compelling reason to leave that part in. You know, I, I don't think it's out of the question that tomorrow, property owners would potentially get a redevelopment deal that would extend past 75 feet. I don't think that's out of the question in today's market. I don't think it's out of the que, 275 may, may be a different story, but certainly 75 feet, I don't think it's unrealistic that a redevelopment plan would hit that mark today. I don't think we need to add another layer to, to, of jurisdiction on top of it. I, I, I don't think we need to, I, this is on the edge of what we're considering to be the South Haymarket project today, the very, very edge. I don't know that it would radically, I don't know if a development there exceeding 75 feet would radically change the, the tenor feel of the South Haymarket development. I would certainly be open to a motion striking that out.
I look at the restrict, the proposal to, to top it at 75 feet, and I must admit that because it's on that corner of the South Haymarket, I don't read it as South Haymarket, I read it as along Ninth Street and O Street, and I think of that as downtown. Whether or not it is downtown or not downtown, I see it as downtown, and so I'm not thinking about how to limit height. Now, you know, I don't know that we want to create a, a canyon at that corner with, you know, eight buildings that are 275. That would be, that would really change the look of downtown on that end, and I think it would skew the heights along O Street as well if it were all that high. But I don't want to limit to 75. I must admit that once we get into the Haymarket landmark, and it's also a historic district, I'm more confused about what I would, would like to see happen to the old Chicago building, but I also know other things are going to step in. If someone suggests adding 100 feet to that, there are other people who will step in to talk about the historic structure and the nature of that building. And same would happen on the Noyes Gallery, if anyone wanted to use federal dollars or anything, tax credits on that building, because that will stop, or at least limit, the amount of development and changes that would happen to that historic structure. So on this one, I'm, I am not interested in putting the height limitations. I think it affects four properties more than they need to be affected today.
Others?
I was concerned about this when I first read it. In fact, I contacted George because it seemed to me that it was so specific and would impact, you know, those businesses close by. And so, at the same time, I'm concerned about maintaining the Haymarket and the historic value, but I, I think these four properties are taking the brunt of it, and so I would not be opposed to seeing it eliminated.
Others?
I agree.
So is anyone making that motion?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and amend the change in height restriction.
Do we have to vote this one down?
I didn't know if this would be considered a friendly amendment.
No, evidently.
Jerry, why don't we call the vote, and then we'll move...
As I read it, you have a main motion to approve it. I think our procedures are that Mr. Beckius can make a motion to amend to the main motion.
And you can vote on that, correct?
And then vote on his motion first, and then go back to the main motion as amended, assuming that his amendment passes. So you don't have to vote on the main one first, you can vote on his motion to amend.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckius.
We'd like to propose that we amend the motion by striking out the height regulation as shown, I think it's only shown in figure 27.72.030A. I don't think it's actually spelled out in text, I think it's only shown in the figure.
Is that correct? Okay. Is that clear to the Planning Department? Okay.
We, we understand your general intent, I believe that's the only figure. For some reason or for somewhere else, we would also take it out of that as it moves forward to the City Council.
Thank you.
Great. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Washington. Thank you.
So this would change, eliminate the height restriction. Jerry, why, why don't we just call the vote on that?
Okay. This was moved by Beckius and seconded by Washington. Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Sure, yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And Ho?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now, back to the original motion, which would be to approve it as amended, which would eliminate the height, height restriction.
And change.
And the friendly amendment.
And the friendly amendment, okay. Any questions about what we're voting on? Right, Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay. Moving on.
Don't we have to vote on the other 4.2?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, I lost track, you're right. Okay, we do need a vote on text amendment 16018.
Move approval, Cor.
Second, Harris.
Any questions about that, comments? Jerry, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Okay, now moving on. Okay, now moving on. Okay, uh, under comprehensive, uh, plan conformance and related change of zone, we have item four point three A comprehensive, oh, excuse me.
Those were deferred, right?
Those were deferred. So we're going to.
Four point three A and four point three B were deferred, so we're on to four point four A and B.
That's correct. Under change of zone and related street and alley vacation, four point four A, change of zone number one six zero three eight from R three residential to R three residential PUD, Planned Unit Development, containing a mix of single-family, single-family attached, commercial and agricultural uses with a development plan which proposes to modify standards of the underlying zoning district subdivision ordinance and design standards generally located at Superior Street and North Thirty-Fifth Street. Staff recommendation is for approval. And the related, uh, street and alley vacation number one six zero zero six to vacate a portion of the North Thirty-Fifth Street right-of-way stub directly north of Superior Street, generally located at Superior Street and North Thirty-Fifth Street. Staff recommendation is conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. George?
Andrew Theroff, Planning Staff. Uh, so yeah, so this is a mixed-use PUD and street and alley vacation. I'll just talk about them both, uh, together. Uh, if we see this map here, uh, the location of the PUD is directly north of Superior Street. Here's Thirty-third Street. This would be Thirty-Fifth, right here where the PUD is. The PUD has, um, a mix of residential, commercial, and agriculture uses. Uh, it has two residential areas. There's, here is one area. It's, um, more of a typical residential density, uh, single-family, attached, single-family units, close to what R three density would be. Uh, the PUD also includes a cottage area. They're calling it the laneway cottages. That would be along here. That would include small cottage lots, seven hundred thousand square feet lots, uh, surrounded by open space. Uh, so the building footprint would basically be the entire lot. The open space would be, uh, additional parking, driveways, green space. The developer will also be including building elevations for this area, uh, to provide certain level of architect, architectural quality and diversity. Cottages at this scale are pretty unique in Lincoln. Uh, I don't think we've seen any with quite this many units. They're showing fifty units here for the cottages, uh, about sixty for the regular residential units. But this would be approving potentially up to a hundred and eighty total units for the entire PUD. There's also a commercial area to the south along Superior that would include, uh, up to forty-five thousand square feet of commercial or a hundred and seventy-five mini storage units or some combination of both. Uh, they're also including an agriculture area. This would be twenty-plus acres. That's the rest of the site here. Most of that is in floodplain or floodway. The developer will keep or retain ownership of some of the land, using it for farming crops, possibly livestock. Yeah, we can probably talk about that in a little more detail. Uh, there's also some open space areas for the residents. And then the other biggest component of this is the RV park along Salt Creek here. This isn't an ideal location for an RV park. It's surrounded by floodway. It's a long, uh, about two thousand foot one-way drive. But, uh, staff and applicant worked with, uh, other departments and we came up with a series of conditions where if those conditions are met, we think the RV park would be acceptable. Um, so we're still recommending approval of the RV park with the conditions. So that's kind of the basics of what this PUD would be. Uh, the street vacation is just right here in the corner. Uh, so there's actually an existing right-of-way stub where Thirty-Fifth Street would be coming off of Superior. It's, um, I believe it's, it's a hundred and thirty feet wide right now. Uh, city standards for a local street, Thirty-Fifth Street would be a local street. Uh, a local commercial street is, uh, between Sixty-S sixth and Seventy-two feet. So at a hundred and thirty feet, this is much wider than would be otherwise needed. Uh, the applicant is proposing to vacate a portion of the stub, uh, in order to provide some more space for the commercial area. And, uh, the remaining piece would be seventy-two, seventy-three feet, so it'd still be wide enough to accommodate Thirty-Fifth Street when it's built. Do we have any questions?
Question for Andrew.
Oh, yeah. So first of all, oh, leave that one up there.
This one, okay.
I'm assuming, though, that that Thirty-Fifth Street, how they have it coming into their development, will still connect to that kind of frontage road that goes back to the west.
This road here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, so that'll still remain there.
Yeah, this is the access for this lot.
Okay, great. Um, so this property is within city limits. Can livestock be raised within city limits?
Yes, um, animal control has requirements on that. I think it's, so livestock is a large animal. We, we classify it as.
Like a cow?
Yes, cow, horse. I think it's one per every acre and a half, some, something like that. There, there is, um, it is allowed, so. You just need a lot, you need a lot of area to have large animals and.
Sandra's gonna go out and get some, some cows.
Yeah. This development has a lot of.
Gosh, I wish I had that amount of ground.
I think the rest of my questions, I'll save for the developer.
Okay. Other questions? I guess that's it. Sorry I called you George. I'm sorry. Advocate?
Marty Fortney, thirty-six hundred Calvert Street. I'm the developer. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for your time. Appreciate it. I've got a little fancier picture than Mr. Andrew had. Let me throw it up here. Let me just highlight, uh, a couple of the areas that we're looking at here. The epicenter for this subdivision is the farm. It's a working farm. Uh, we worked closely with several departments and have gone through the gauntlet, if you will, to make sure that we're doing it correctly because I'm pretty petulant about procedures and making sure that it's sustainable. So I know sustainable and green space is a overused word, but in lieu of like a golf course or some other large green space, I've chosen to look at a farm area. Because of the unique location of this property here, we have a floodway and a floodplain issues, so it's very difficult to work with. We don't have any structures in that area. But, uh, we spent a bit of time with, um, planning and Steve, uh, had introduced me to his long-term planner, Brandon. And at subsequent meetings was, uh, with Community Gardens, Community Crops. And, uh, Ben is one of the directors there. He was very instrumental and kind of helped develop some options and ideas. The other piece that we were able to visit with is the Lincoln Food Council. And so we got, that's, we, I got some very mind-blowing options in terms of what you can do with a property. And so they had some very unique op- options and opportunities to do that. So to figure out how to put all that together, to benefit the association here in this area, these hundred-plus units that are shown, uh, that's the goal, to put it in a, in a procedure and a, in a way that just couldn't be sustainable. And the animal livestock, we had a, a big meeting with Health Department and all their folks coming down there. And so it actually qualifies for about twenty-two large animals. And that's, they determine it by weight and size. And, uh, again, the, the idea with the large animals would be more of the aesthetics for farming, uh, more of the environment. Uh, we can use actually the composting material from the animals. The soil needs to be remediated. We did soil sample testings and had the state sa- uh, do the testings on it. There's some acidity levels that need to be addressed and so forth. I visited with a couple of commercial, uh, farmers for the garden area. And so here, you'll notice there's several garden areas along here. Those were intending to be potentially vegetable gardens. There are a different variety of vegetables that are needed. Uh, there's actually, and I didn't understand this to begin with, but there is a food hub in Lincoln where Ryan Hospital, some of the grocery stores are looking for local vegetables grown. So that is a good potential site for that. I'm personally, I'm not a farmer, so I don't know exactly how that's gonna work. But I've talked with some good people that have some good ideas on how to make that work. So I want to make sure we have the space to do that. The irrigation, too, the irrigation part of it, we, and I'm gonna just touch on some highlights. Um, Anne Post, Legal Counsel, and Tim Birken are with me, my civil engineer, to kind of get into some specifics. But the goal is to capture the water. Instead of putting the rain bucket under the gutter on each home, Tim has designed a way to capture the, all of the water from all the homes so we can put it in this expanded basin and use it to irrigate these crops here continually through the summer. Couple other noted features, uh, on this laneway cottage, it is a unique concept. And having been a builder in Lincoln for the last twenty-five years, I've seen some of the cool things that, um, the Campbell family did at Village Gardens and the Abel family up there in northern Fallbrook. And when you step out of the bounds of the tradition, you have to be pretty careful about it. And so we're trying to move cautiously with that. I actually would see, I think this market potential for these smaller laneway cottages is very large. I think we can bring a home in there maybe a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and sixty thousand. So the average home price on the north side of Lincoln is above one hundred and eighty thousand. So the goal is to have a, not everybody wants a little bigger house. Some people want a little smaller. I've talked to so- several active adults, uh, their lifestyle where they would like something a little smaller, but they want the open space. To be able to afford to do that, this green space doesn't generally pay for itself. I have a full-time caregiver on this, in this barn location. We did provisions for Corral. And we talked about, out of the floodplain, we can do the trees here with a nut or fruit orchard in this location. Uh, so we're trying to make provisions so that in this green space here, that it's managed properly and it's funded properly. Well, I will be setting up an association for this area, for these homes here, and manage it until such time where we have the right culture in place and the, the votes needed, they can manage themselves. But I wanted to retain this farm space because I want to make sure that it's managed properly and funded properly. And it's not physically po- or, it's not, it's not financially feasible for an individual homeowner to finance the roughly twenty-five acres of farm. It's just not gonna happen. So I have to try to find some ways to supplement that. So the idea of the RV park and visiting with departments like NRD, we spent quite a bit of time at, at the NRD department. And, um, we had to work through a couple easement issues that they had from way back. And we did get all that work through. But the idea with the RV park is to be able to help create some additional income for this green space property. And it's difficult to show on a piece of paper here, but if you had a chance to go up on this, this higher area right here, this ridgeline, it's about nine or ten feet above this area, maybe even twelve feet right here. Uh, it has a beautiful view of the Salt Creek here on this side, so. So we're gonna nut, and there's a lot of trees right along this ridgeline. We're gonna, the goal is to nestle the RVs inside. We don't want that to be a detraction for the subdivision itself, so that in itself has to be managed very well. It's a fully paved lane, full hookups. And we spent a lot of time with planning on this to kind of figure out and make sure that this is the right move to, to make. So, but it is an integral part to be able to put the dollars in place to be able to manage this roughly twenty-five acres. One other piece here is on these, this design for the median right here. This is a, I believe, an eighty-foot right-of-way. Tim designed instead of sixty-foot. One of the challenges we find when we have a higher density, the overall density in the project's pretty low in terms of the acreage space, but in terms of the density along here, I elected to put a low-rise median. And so each of these, it, that kind of looks like an egg shape there. That's a green space. It'll be sprinkled. There's a private spring, like, street and I get sprinkler system in there. So that'll be all irrigated. And it allows for parking, uh, in, in the middle there in the median, so. 'Cause what I find in these, some of these subdivisions is that we have a challenge with the parking when the, when the driveways are so close together. So that was an, it's an additional expense, but, um, I want to make sure that we have the right amount of parking 'cause I've seen the flip side when you don't. It's a real challenge for everybody and it's not easily corrected in the future. I'd like to defer, um, any of my time left to Anne and Tim, as they gotta have several details in terms of the project. And I can answer any questions, anybody has it, anytime.
So will there be parking allowed in those little cottages? You know, you kind of have driveways that go around there. Can people park in there as well?
The idea is that there would be, uh, two parking stalls per cottage. One, there'd be a one-stall garage, and Anne has some pictures for you to see, too, some renderings. And then one in front of the house. That would leave the, the laneway, if you will, free of cars. The goal is not to have them park in the actual laneway, but in front of their home and one in the. And, and we do have some additional parking that we've put in these areas that Tim designed to make sure we had adequate parking. Plus, there's, I believe, thirty-two additional parkings in the middle of the street here on both sides.
If someone did park in one of those U's, um, is there enough space for another car to get by?
There would be. Uh, we'd probably look at, visiting with Tim, we'd probably look at putting a curb on one side uh, for snow removal and, uh, and a big push tow truck to move the car. No, I'm just kidding.
I just, I, I know how lazy people are and they're not gonna wanna park throughout here in the median if they think they can park right here.
It, it'll have to be managed very carefully, um, because the concept is generally new. But there are areas, there are pockets in the city that have similar situation. It just has to be managed and, and I'm the person that, I'll be building the homes as well. I'm the person that I sit in front of and sell the home when we sit down with the realtor. I'll be making sure those expectations are clear 'cause it could be a potential problem, sure.
When you say managed, that needs to be managed, um, who would be doing the management after the sale?
In terms of the management of, of the, of the association?
Yeah, and the parking and enforcing, I mean, before we, you know.
Generally, in, in the. Yes, understood. And so I would be setting up the association myself, and so I'll be managing that myself. There'll be several committees that'll be formed as we sell the homes. Uh, generally, we have a grounds committee. We have a celebration committee that might be formed. I've done several other associations in the past. It takes time to build the right culture, but as a developer, I want to make sure that it's functioning and in place before we turn it over. So, and that usually takes three to five years to do that, so.
Those are cities, those are city streets, though, other than the.
Thirty-Fifth Street is, is public street, correct?
About the one that you.
Private street?
That's a private street, okay.
On the cottages, can you tell me, like, how, how many square feet are we talking for the actual cottage?
Cool. I think if I could, um, Commissioner, if I could have Anne come up and she could show us in terms of, and, and I'm more of a visual person. I don't know if that helps you, too. But generally, in terms of square footage, in terms of square footage, I think the smallest would probably be seven hundred square feet. Probably the average is nine hundred, maybe even eleven hundred square feet.
Would you zoom out a little bit on that? No, it's, there's a button there.
Oh, down below.
Oh, got it, okay.
It might be zoomed out all the way.
Okay.
These are some of the elevations and renderings of the laneway cottages.
Anne, why don't you introduce yourself and give us your address?
Uh, my name is Anne Post. I am counsel, uh, for the developer. I, uh, address is twelve forty-eight O Street. So we'll start out by first, uh, I guess. I can start my spiel unless you have any more questions of Marty?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We kind of.
I, I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand the need for the RV park, but I will tell you that is the part of this that causes me the most heartburn. When I read this staff report that even if you comply with every condition, it's still gonna be just on the edge of being acceptable. Are you completely sold on including the RV part in here?
I appreciate the question. The answer is yes. Um, the need is there. The question that has to be, the, the answer that has to be demonstrated, I should say, is that it's managed correctly. So, and, and and in that piece, if you have poor management, it would be a detraction to the sale of the subdivision, which would be bad for myself as a developer and a builder, would be bad for my customers and the association. So I'll be the first one to get a phone call either way. So I can tell you that in terms of, I, I agree on the fringe of, of, of the location. I think the location is exceptional in terms of the views. And we're asking for several variations here with the farm. We have several uniquenesses going. The bottom line is, is that if I, if I unable to finance and keep in place the stability of the stability of the farm ground itself in terms of finances, that's the biggest challenge. I run those numbers. And that's probably 80 to 100,000 dollars a year in managing that piece of ground. So, to offset that, there's no way the association can afford to do that. So, to share that, so then it becomes the risk. So, then I'm weighing the risk, and you're asking me if I'm 100% convinced, it's weighing the risk of doing the RV park? The, the risk for the RV park is, is, I believe is zero in terms of the location and what it could provide for people that are coming into town for home games and stuff like that. But it has to be managed in such a way that there's, there's no problems. There's no, there's minimal issues, noise. There's going to be, have to be several rules in place to make that happen. And having traveled and been in an RV situation, there are more restricted areas or campgrounds than some that are not. And I know that some of our steep campgrounds have changed from having alcohol or no alcohol in the RV parks or the campgrounds. That was a big substantial problem when they created that. So, so it's just a matter of managing, again, managing the process for the RV park. And I believe it can be done 100%.
Thank you. Ann?
As I said, my name is Ann Post. I am counsel for the developer. My address is 1248 O Street. And first, I wanted to start in, we are offering a motion to amend the staff report. I've got copies of it to distribute. Who can I give these to? I think there should be an extra copy for Andrew. We've made some changes since we showed it to him last. So, first, before I start into detailing the changes that we're proposing, I'd like to start by thanking the planning department. This is really a unique use of the property. This is the laneway cottages, the farm incorporated into this neighborhood is a really unique use of property Lincoln hasn't seen before. And it required a lot of flexibility and rising to the challenge for the planning department to work with us to make it happen. And they have done that. So, I want to start out by thanking them for that effort. A great example of that to lead into is the first proposed amendment to the staff report. This deals with the laneway cottage area. The language you hear, see here before you is intended to give us some flexibility. So, first, let me describe the laneway cottages to you a little bit. This is laneway cottages or this area here, this is really almost a series of pocket neighborhoods. As we talked about, the, the lot size is mostly taken up by the footprint of the building itself. It's surrounded by an outlot that has green space and parking. As this is a new use, planning has an interest, as the developer does, in making sure that these are an attractive feature for Lincoln. These houses are going to be close together. And we don't want them to look, end up looking like a row of army barracks. So, the developer is also very interested in that as well. However, as he talked about, in order to make sure that these, this housing style has the broadest possible appeal, we also need to, he also needs to bring these in at a certain price point. So, we have these renderings before you, but we will, the developer will need some flexibility to change some of the elements to hit that price point. So, for example, one example of this is, this is one of the very unique proposed elevations for a, for the laneway cottages. You can see here that there is a, that this shows a glass railing around the porch. That is a very expensive element that may not be able to incorporate to hit our 125 to 160,000 dollar price range. Therefore, we've worked with the planning department to, to develop this language that you see before you in 2.1. This, under this language, we're agreeing to give the planning department elevations, to give them a concept of what these laneway cottages will look like. But it also give us the, it'll also give us the flexibility to hit the price point. And also to, to actually take into consideration maybe some buyer preferences. If they want to change the paint color, we can work with them to do that. Here are, I just want to scroll through a couple of the other proposals. So, these are really meant to be small but very attractive and to hit that demographic. Moving on to 2.6, this is the condition of approval that deals with the RV park. As you saw, there's a long list of conditions for approval. We have just a couple requests for amending that. The first one, the first one is 2.6F. This deals with the, the paving of the road. First, I want to lay out that the intent for this RV park is first to build a first-rate facility. We want something that is going to be very inviting, that people are, who own very expensive RVs are going to be very excited to bring to the area. So, a part of this, this is going to be a paved road. It is going, the pad sites are going to be paved. The intent is to put in six-inch concrete. And then, if you see up here at the very top, there's intent to be a cul-de-sac so these vehicles can turn around, can turn around to come back out. We understand that this 2.6F was put in, was put in place to ensure that emergency vehicles could access the property. We believe that building this to the grade for RVs, we'll take care of that, that the emergency vehicles will be able to, that the quality of road will be able to handle large emergency vehicles, that the cul-de-sac will be able to allow those vehicles to turn around. And so, our concern with this is that, that whether the language of this is going to require curbing and guttering and sewer in this road. And that would not only be unnecessary to this use, it would also substantially increase the cost. To move on to 2.6J.
Could you wrap up pretty soon, please?
Okay, yes, I will quickly go through these. To move on to 2.6J, our concern with this provision is that first, special permits can already be revoked if the, if the holder is not complying with its provisions. We're concerned that this could allow that to be revoked without the typical public hearing process, without allowing participation in that process. That's why we're asking that to be stricken. 2.7, this is because after conversations with planning and public works and the fire department, we were going back and forth on whether the fire, the water main should be six inches or four inches when the real concern was fire suppression. So, because of the use, this is an RV park with open space and on one, with a garden on one side, a creek on the other, and the largest potential fire would be an RV fire. We believe that a four-inch water main should be sufficient for water suppression, and we, we believe the fire department will agree. And finally, we're asking to strike 2.15. In our conversations with, with watershed management, we believe that they are agreeable to this. I know our engineer has spoken to them about that. And he will be up before me, or behind me. And 2.16, also, we have been in conversation with watershed management about that. And we believe that, that they should be, they will be agreeable to that. Finally, I, I know that we were in contact with the Methodist Church. They had concerns about drainage. And we've been in contact with them about this, that this should not significantly contribute, this shouldn't contribute significantly to the water going into this oxbow, which is right behind their property. I think Marty detailed that a little bit, and our engineer can do that behind me. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Ms. Post?
When we're talking about striking 2.6F, we're only talking about the RV road. That's, is that correct?
Yes, because this 2.6 deals with the RV park and the sub points then for the deal with the RV park.
Thank you, I see that now.
Is the RV park road big enough for two vehicles to go through, or does it have to be just one vehicle?
Per the condition, excuse me, per the conditions, it's going to be 20 foot wide.
Okay, so there'd be enough room for them to meet and still both be on the road?
Especially when we're talking about large vehicles, I believe they would, they'd probably have to squeeze, but it should be big enough.
Maya?
Sorry if you covered this already, but what, what is your basis for thinking that the, the road will be sufficient for emergency vehicles and that the fire department will be fine with the four-inch? Have, have you spoken to them and they have indicated that they're supportive of this? Or you said, we believe. So, is that, is that based on conversations that you've had to date?
Hi, Tim Gergen, Clark Anderson Partners, Tintin, Lincoln Mall. Yes, we have talked with Pat DeBora with the fire department. His main concern is, just wants to have the fire hydrants that he can hook up to and have proper water pressure and quantity of water put out fires. We will be putting in City of Lincoln fire hydrants. It's just the water main size. Typically, you find in the smallest in City of Lincoln is six-inch. You don't know what size of water mains, or size of fires will be fighting. You could have 30-story, 40-story houses that you have put out here. We're dealing with a much smaller RV park, a smaller venue. We have fire hydrants spaced so that the fire hoses on their trucks are spaced evenly. So, we'll have adequate fire hydrant sizing locations. It's just the water main going to the fire hydrants will be smaller than what a City of Lincoln standard is. It will be a private water main. Thus, we want to try to cut costs down to a four-inch instead of the six-inch standard because we find that the fire suppression pressure and quantity of water would be sufficient with a four-inch in lieu of a six-inch.
And that, you ran that by him as well?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, sorry. I, I missed what you said about 2.6J. What was the reason for, for striking that? You said something about being part of the process or?
Yes. So, this, 2.6J says that special permits would be temporary and valid only during the period of essential, of compliance. Our point is that special permits are, there's already the ability to revoke them if they're, if the permitee is not complying with their terms. Our concern is whether under, with this language of being, that the permit would only be valid during the period of compliance, that this would take away the requirement to have that public process before revoking the special permit and just allowing the holder to participate in that process as opposed to the permit just becoming invalid under its terms and no longer allowing the use without a process.
This may be a question for Steph, but I'm interested in your take on, on that particular, on J in particular. How do you kind of see, if it, if it remains the way it is, how do you see the, the control and enforcement of, of that being in compliance? You know, how, how in your mind would that be carried out?
Well, you nailed where there's a little bit of uncertainty. And I can tell you as an attorney, an attorney for this developer, I don't like the uncertainty.
So, is that what you're, that's what you're, the issue that you have with it?
First, the first issue is we want to make sure that there is that public process, that we would have a hearing and the ability to participate in that. Now, the question is if there's not a public process, who would decide when you're not in compliance? When would they decide they're not in compliance? At what point is that special permit simply invalid? And then, what is done to stop operation under an invalid permit? I would assume that that would all take place within the planning department. So, I don't know exactly what form that process would take.
That's a good question. The staff can probably address.
Yes.
How they envision the.
Yep.
Other questions? Dean?
No, I just at some point want to hear staff's response.
We'll get the staff. Yep. Anybody else have questions?
I had a question a little bit about, I have some questions about the development and questions about the RV park. First, with the RV park, do you plan on having dump stations? And if, if not, why? How are, I'm assuming there's water hookups and dump hookups for this RV park?
Yes, the intent is to have the dump stations. Now, you note that there are not restroom facilities planned for this RV park. And part of that is because this is intended to be an RV park. It's not a campsite. And so, there are restrooms, there are restrooms in the RVs. And so, those, the facility isn't necessary. And, but the dump area is, and those will be there. Marty, did you have something to add to that?
No, that, no.
And who retains management control of the RV park?
I would.
Forever.
Well, it is set up as a separate lot to be able to sell the RV park. So, it is a management service. I look at this development, there are several pieces of managed service. And in my tenure working with the federal government, the Marine Corps years ago, I had a, a good understanding and an opening, eye-opening experience on how managed services work and how they have to be interrelated. So, there are certainly several managed pieces that have to go in here. But the association, for example, once that culture is set up and we have processes in place, I'll be very happy to turn that piece over because people should manage themselves in terms of that. The farm itself would probably be too much for an association to manage. That's why I elected not to design it that way. But in discussion with the, the planning department and Tim's design ideas here, we have a prime piece of ground here that's dedicated to the association. And so, I envision that, I, I envision this being paved right here for accessibility purposes too. I build a lot of different accessibility housing. But then, we would have some tables or some chairs and some kids' play space in this area for the association with the main view here. So, it, in terms of answering your question, there are several managed service pieces. And with the right people in place, I don't see a problem getting that done.
Can you talk a little bit about FEMA's reaction to the RV park?
Not necessarily FEMA's. I might have to defer to Tim on that. We had lengthy conversations with NRD and had done some approval processes through that piece and with Ben Higgins and Waters Management. But do you want to highlight on that?
We've had a meeting with the NRD Subcommittee and their full board. We have an easement, the access easement to the Salt Creek channel we had to work through. And we presented our project to them. They were actually quite enthusiastic about the RV park and that location. For the sheer movement of trying to promote outdoor activity, it is a great view inside the City of Lincoln to a natural drainage way that is up on a plateau that is actually on a very safe bend of the Salt Creek since you've got the outside flow. This is where you get the turbulent flow and the erosion. The inside bend is actually a very serene, very peaceful view of the Salt Creek. So, they were very enthusiastic about promoting outdoor comedies to the development. It was a nice experience working with the NRD on that. We do have floodway through there, and that is why we've got it set up so that it is a RV park. So, nothing's going to be permanent. We can't have any permanent structures through there. Nice thing about Salt Creek is not all creeks are the same. Salt Creek's a very slow-rising channel. We may get a storm, and then two days later, you're going to see Salt Creek up at that flood stage level. So, that's why we have an emergency action plan and a caretaker involved is when we do have that storm, we start seeing Salt Creek rising. We can start evacuating the RV. We do have a, NRD is a flood monitor right at the bridge of Superior Street. So, we're right next to that as well. It's an ideal location in an urban setting to have someone in an RV park enjoy nature within the city limits.
Any other questions?
So, the caretaker that you have, you think he's going to live on the end of that cul-de-sac there. Is he going to be the caretaker for the RV park and the farm, or are you going to have a separate caretaker for each?
I think initially, it'll be one and the same to get started. The RV park in full operation would require about one and a half full-time equivalent just in itself. I think the farm is probably, just the management of the ground is about three-quarters full-time equivalent. So, and to answer your question, I'd see that being two different positions.
As it gets built out?
Yes.
Now, I want to make sure I heard correctly, the RV sites, the pad sites, all of them are going to be concrete paved?
Correct. Where the trailer sits, correct. And then, we'll have the green space and...
But the road, that access road is not going to be paved?
The, the access road will be paved as well. So, what we'll have is a paved road and then a paved pad site. And then, so if the road will be, I'll just draw this, a paved road and then a paved RV site. But this would be your lot. And so, this would be, you know, your table, your tent, whatever. be your lot. And so this would be, you know, your table, your tent, whatever, you know, if the RV is sitting right here, that would be all paved. But obviously, we don't want to have it all concrete or paved.
And the turning radius at the end of that is, is sufficient enough for a fire truck, for someone pulling an RV?
It's a standard City of Lincoln cul-de-sac.
So if it's gonna be paved, why do you want to eliminate item F?
The item F, we, we've stated on our plans, it's a paved access road. We are concerned about the text of similar manner to the adjacent public roads and shall be approved by the city. Adjacent public roads come with curb and gutter, come 27-foot wide. They come with certain other items, design standards that we consider this more of a driveway. We don't want curb and gutters. We want the runoff not to be captured by curb and add storm sur. We want it to sheet flow off. We don't want it to be approved by the city. We want it to be a private driveway. This is where we are. We are stating that we are showing it as a 20-foot wide with a standard City of Lincoln cul-de-sac in our plans. I guess private driveways aren't approved by City of Lincoln any further than what they are at this point that we're willing to commit to.
Any other questions?
So it's, it's fair to say that when we're imagining what this RV park would look like, if we were to imagine what we would get in a state park, for example, would be concurrent with the concept?
Correct, correct.
And help me out. So I know that there's all different sizes of streets, but that, that 20-foot width, that's gonna be enough for, you know, two cars. I know these are gonna be bigger than cars probably, but...
Correct.
They could pass each other if they needed to.
If you can kind of think, a standard parking stall is nine-foot wide, so you put two of them together, you get 18. An RV park, you might add another, or an RV might be another foot on either side. So it, it will be tight when they pass by each other, but the amount of RVs coming and going all at the same time, you may have some overlap off to the edge, but not too much.
I'm thinking more of like a country road that's like just black asphalt, but no curbing. So if they have to go, no one tire off the side.
Right, exactly like a country road.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have questions for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Andrew?
How feel about these amendments?
We have a few comments on the amendments. So 2.1 regarding the elevations, we are okay with that. 2.6F regarding the paving, instead of just striking the idea of paving completely, we'd like it to say, "The access road to each RV site shall be paved with six-inch concrete," which is what the applicant indicated they were planning on doing, just to ensure there's some paving of some kind.
Six-inch concrete?
Concrete, yeah. We are okay with J being struck. 2.7 we're okay with. This was, the water main requirement was at the request of the fire department. So providing water service to the satisfaction of the fire department would accomplish that goal. 2.15, we'd like to keep that one with, with a slight modification. So provide minimum floor elevations to the outlot areas to the satisfaction of watershed management. They're not here today to comment on this, so we just want to make sure they're okay with whatever's provided. And then we would also like to keep 2.16, the original 2.16, that's, that's a requirement of stormwater quality standards. Possibly at the end of that, we could add to the satisfaction of watershed management. That was a condition they, they wanted to see. Again, they're not here to comment on that today, so we don't want to get rid of that.
Andrew, I have another question for you. On the sidewalk, I know that there's some, you're like, because there's no sidewalk on the north side of Superior right now, you're saying there's some, and there's no way for the sidewalk to cross that Salt Creek. How far is that sidewalk gonna go?
That would get determined at time of final plat, but basically what we're thinking is it terminate somewhere in the commercial area, somewhere over here.
The only reason why I bring this up is I have personally walked that because I'm, lost a hubcap. And I walked it because I'm cheap and wanted to find it. And so I, I mean, so I would like the sidewalk to go as far as it can because, I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one that's had to walk that.
Yeah, I was out there putting a zoning sign up and, yeah, it's kind of treacherous sometimes.
And it gets a little, the grass gets a little tall, which it won't be anymore after this. But, so I had to go on both sides of the bridge because I wasn't sure which side it was on. So if we could get that sidewalk as far as possible, that would be great.
Okay.
Any other questions for Andrew? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal.
Oh, and I did find the hubcap.
Where the...
Okay, we are just fine with changing it to six-inch thick paving. That is our intention already. So that is for 2.6F. We are happy to strike 2.6J. Let's see, we are happy with 2.7, of course, as far as 2.15, as long as we include to the satisfaction of watershed management. We're happy with that revision. We have been in contact with watershed management. We believe that they will be, that they are satisfied with what we have. And this will make sure of that. And then for 2.16, again, I believe we're happy with that as long as it is to the satisfaction of watershed management. Been in contact with them about this amended language, so we believe this amended language should be to their satisfaction. We believe this amended language should be to their satisfaction and adding that to the previous language should address the need.
So you'd like to, 2.16 reads as suggested by the planning department and adding the words "to the satisfaction of watershed management" after the basin?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like Andrew, it's dated.
But they're not here today, so it just needs to be clarified.
Yes.
So as, as they were talking about previously?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for this post?
I have one more. I just want to make sure that when you guys are selling this, because a lot of times, I mean, we studied this on a, on a previous application today. When you're selling it, are you gonna make sure that people know that there might be livestock there? So if there's any smells, they know what they're getting into ahead of time?
Yes, first, we envision livestock to really be an attraction. So we're gonna be selling the fact that there's livestock there. And again, this is more aesthetic use, maybe having a few cows or a few smaller animals to make it feel like a farm for the educational opportunities and not as a commercial livestock-raising operation.
Or, or as a zoo?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Sure.
I noticed there was quite a few questions on who's gonna be in charge of doing what and, and how that's gonna work. And there's no way to say that other than words. I've completed a little over $50 million worth of construction in Lincoln and the surrounding region. So in the past 25 years, it's all I've ever done out of the military. So it certainly is a managed process and we are, I am pushing a threshold on a few pieces here. But I think it's critical to just point out that the meetings that we've had with the city and the different agencies, and we've met a lot of them, and we've met with a lot of private folks in terms of the Lincoln Food Council, and there are some pretty cool ideas that we want to incorporate. So I want to make sure that it's financed properly. You've heard nightmares with associations that are not financed properly. It's a real problem. So that will not happen here. If it's not, if it's gotta be financed properly, it's gotta be managed properly. So I can just tell you in terms of managing the service and the process, I have several folks that I rely on, lifelong farmers that I've consulted with in terms of setting up the process. And the health department in terms of the animals, they, a real particular, this little graph they have, and it talks about the size and the weight and what's applicable, like Andrew was saying, so many per acre and so forth. So I, I do see that as Ann has indicated, it's more of an attraction and certainly not a zoo by any means, but just a way to, to say, oh, cool, that's a, that's a neat feature. And I think people, when we, when we're selling and sitting, when I'm sitting across the table with the, the folks there to paint the picture, I'm, I'm a firm believer in making sure that they have all the information. So they'll see this plat up to Bingham with. They won't see one that doesn't show the RV park. They will, they will see the whole piece, including the commercial ground. We don't know exactly where the commercial ground's gonna be, but they're gonna see all the pieces. I've met with Mr. Shore. He owns the majority of the property to the west. I've met with him a couple of times. I spoke with him on the phone this morning. And he is in Omaha. He would be here in support of the project. He wanted me to let you know that. And he's excited about scenes of development here. And he had some of the same concerns that we talked about. So I just want to reiterate the managed service and the information that the people will get when they're buying the home. Those people that are not interested in seeing garden or cow are not gonna live here. But there are a lot of people that have expressed interest in this, just a little bit of peace that we've talked with the people. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Marty, just to clarify here really, really quickly. So I can anticipate at least initially that you'll be owning and developing and managing the RV park and ag section?
Correct.
Uh, the commercial section? You'll, or will you sell off the commercial piece?
The commercial section, we have a couple viable options. So that is, the goal is to sell that.
Okay. Are the cottages a rental product or a for-sale product? Or to be determined?
My preference is to minimize the rental product. I mean, some of that is healthy, some of it's necessary. If there is a rental situation, because I will be selling those products, I, I, I won't continually own those cottages. That's not my goal or the townhomes. To have a healthy neighborhood, we need individuals owning those properties. But in terms of the maintain, the grounds maintenance and so forth, the benefit of the association, particularly the shared services, I can get the lawn mowed. It may cost you $35 to mow a city lot. I can get it done for eight or 10 because I'm mowing 50 of them at one time. So it's a huge piece, but, so that managed part. But if there is a rental situation, which I wouldn't be able to control necessarily in the future, there will be mechanisms in place in the association in terms of how that'll be handled. And they'll be pretty brutal. So there's not, so we can minimize problems.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Jerry, we need to call these votes separately.
Yes, we do. Okay, this will be the vote for change of zone number 16038. Staff recommendation is for approval. And there is a motion or proposed amendment to that change of zone. Several votes.
Move approval with amendments.
Second. Amended by the applicant and then re-amended by the planning department?
Yes.
Second, Becky is.
Okay, I do need to note that even though Commissioner Shear is not present, he did declare a conflict of interest on both items.
Discussion? We'll talk about both of them together?
I think it's a very unique project and I think it's bringing some interesting uses to this part of Lincoln and I wish you the best of success.
I agree with Tom. I think it is a very unique proposal. However, I still have real problems with the RV park. I think when we see something that says, even if you meet all of these conditions, it's marginal at best. And I understand and I'm sorry, but I don't feel in good conscience that I can vote yes for something that I know will be just minimal for the City of Lincoln. So that's my position.
Thank you. Anyone else? Maya?
I'd just like to reiterate that I'm intrigued by this concept. It's not something we see every day. And we had a few applications come forward lately that have been a little bit out of the ordinary. And I think it's, I think it's, that's, that's a good sign that we're, we're trying to come up with new things and, and testing them out. I'm originally from Sweden. It's not unusual to have campers and RVs in proximity to residential. And it can be done in a very orderly and, and attractive way if that is, if you manage to pull that off. I think that this could be kind of a, a cool, in touch with nature, sort of get to know where your food comes from. I'm, I'm willing to give you a concept a, a try. And like Tom said, I wish you the best of success.
Sandra?
On a scale of one to 10 for creativity, I'd give you the highest score on creativity. And I think it's worth a try. And I do wish you the very best of luck because I think an RV park does sort of push the boundaries a lot. And I'd rather have it be successful than not.
Anyone else?
I agree. I, I like to see things that think outside the box. And I really like the, the farming component, the, the gardens, the livestock. I think that that's really important as we move away from farming to kind of bring that back. I, I think there is some concerns for the RV park. I understand why you're putting it in to make it feasible. And, and I'm putting my trust in you that will be managed properly and we won't have any problems. So I'm willing to give it a go.
As someone who lives on the north side of Lincoln, I'm drive by this almost every single day. So it will be, I will be watching with great interest as it develops, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion. I think that obviously this is unique and it's a little bit exciting and we'll see where it goes. So Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for a motion to approve as amended. Beck, yes?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Okay, item 4.4B is street and alley vacation number 16006. Staff recommendation is for conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Move approval, Core?
Second, Becky is.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Beck is?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. We're adjourned.
Okay, I would just make note that the pending item on the agenda, Special Permit 16009 for construction of a carport on property generally located at 1801 King's Highway. That application will be before the Planning Commission for Public Hearing and Action on February 15th. So it will be coming off of the pending list.
We're adjourned. Thank you.